We're going to call this meeting of the City Council and the Successor Agency for San Carlos to order. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the order of agenda. I'm actually going to propose to my colleagues, if they would be amenable to it, that we actually take off the very last item, the letter to the community regarding PG&E from the agenda, just because I think this is going to be a very long meeting to begin with. And we would bring it back at a future date. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Sounds acceptable.
Yes.
Are there any other -- do staff have any requests to change the order of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I received one from a couple of council members late last week who have asked if we can swap the order of 9A and 9B. So the 9A is the Crestview election, North Crestview election item. 9B is the North Crestview discussion. They'd like to take those in reverse order.
Actually, that makes more sense when one thinks about it. Is that okay with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yes, Matt?
The shuttle issue, where is that on the agenda? I'd heard from the East Side group that they wanted to hear that earlier if we could.
That is item 9C. And what I left it with, I was corresponding with Ben Fuller, was that if he wanted to make a request, or obviously if you want to make a request to move it, that's fine.
Yeah, on their behalf, I wanted to move it earlier. I think we'd probably get through that perhaps more quickly than we will the other item.
Okay. I definitely agree that we would get through it more quickly. I think it still may take some time. So I'm not sure I support that, but let's see what the rest of the council thinks.
I'd rather not.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it the way that it is.
All right. Okay. Then those will be the changes to the order of the agenda. Next item is report from closed session. Greg?
There is no reportable item from closed session.
Thank you, Greg. Next item is council communications and announcements. Cameron?
Thank you, Mark. One quick announcement. I attended the San Mateo County Library JPA Governing Board meeting this morning. The San Mateo County Library JPA is made up of 12 libraries, of which San Carlos Library is one of them. Just a couple of quick items. One is, I would say that the recent renovation of the San Carlos Library is a big success story for the Library JPA. It was the number-one accomplishment that they cited for their past year. We looked at the budget for this upcoming year. The library is in a very healthy financial state. One item that's coming up that's interesting and has a potential impact to our own library is that there are three communities which essentially get excess tax revenue each year for the library. Those are Atherton, Portola Valley, and Woodside. Currently, that money goes into accounts to be used only for those libraries. There's going to be discussion in the future, and a subcommittee was appointed to discuss whether those funds, which currently are about $10 million, on an ongoing basis would be available to other libraries in the community. And so there's going to be some discussion of that, which has the potential to bring additional revenue in for the San Carlos Library. So the one other thing I would say is, my wife and I had the opportunity to go to Chickens' Ball, not this past weekend, but the weekend before. We had a great time, and I think, you know, folks who played together did a great job. And it's, as everybody knows, I think, 74 years of raising money for San Carlos schools, and it was a great community event. So that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Cameron. Matt?
Yeah, I wanted to share this letter I received from Kevin Mullen's office, primarily because it came to me via our city council mailboxes. And so it came through, you might say, an official route to me, and he's asking for an endorsement. And I thought it was rather strange, because when I got it, I saw the envelope, and it has the Assembly logo on the outside, and I thought it was going to be something -- I knew he was having a town hall meeting, and I thought it might have something to do with that. But I opened it up, and he's announcing his reelection campaign. And I was rather shocked, again, that it has the official logo for the State Assembly on there. And so I just wanted to point that out to folks, that I got a letter like that. I won't be -- I will not be endorsing him. And in fact, I think, given the state of the legislature or our representatives right now in Sacramento, and that we've got three who are under criminal investigation, this kind of activity is -- it's wrong, it's unethical, and I think people should know about it and have second thoughts when they go to the ballot box and consider Kevin Mullen for State Assembly. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Bob?
I attended a meeting of the Joint Powers Group for our sewer board, Silicon Valley Clean Water, last Thursday, and we talked about some budget items. The budget this year is in pretty good shape for the current year. We're anticipating a slight increase for next year. The rehab project, which totals $400 million, is on pace, and so far is within budget. They are dealing a lot with Redwood City folks, especially in Redwood Shores, because we have to put the 48-inch main that we have to replace somewhere through Redwood Shores, whether it's through the levee, or the streets, or the slough, or somewhere. And it's difficult, because we have to figure out costs, and we have to figure out how it's going to impact the community. So they're having a number of meetings with the community down there, which I think is great, and getting a lot of input. And hopefully, in the next 60 days, we'll have a decision and figure out where we're going to put the pipe. Can't think of anything else right at the moment, so I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Housing Leadership Council breakfast last Friday. And one of the panelists was Senator Jerry Hill. There was also the CEO of Habitat for Humanity. And what I learned is that in the wake of the demise of redevelopment in California, there are several pieces of legislation that are wending their way through the process that would make some alternate provisions to provide funding for affordable housing and housing in general in the state. It's -- redevelopment supplied quite a bit of money for housing in the state, and there's also been a dramatic drop in federal housing funds over the last several years. So it was encouraging to see that these new pieces of legislation are being proposed. Also, on the same night, I attended our volunteer recognition dinner, which was held over at the Adult Community Center. We had, I guess, 50, 60 people there, all the various volunteers, people that do things for San Carlos that go unrecognized. And it's a one-time-a-year that we get to say thank you to them. So it was very nice to be able to attend that. Also, HART, the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, JPA that I sit on, had their annual luncheon last Wednesday. It was very well-attended, and again, a fair amount of funds were raised for assistance of affordable housing projects. Nearly not enough, but it was nice to see a good turnout. And just finally, a couple notes. I was able to meet with a couple constituencies over the last week. I met with some Crestview neighbors over their thoughts on the proposed land swap. And I also met with some members of the school and sports community who had their thoughts as well. And I appreciate and thank everyone who was able to come to those. And your comments are taken very seriously. It is something we're going to talk about tonight, but I want to say I appreciate people taking the time to let me know how they feel. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ron. I just had a few things. Like Ron, I was at the volunteer dinner, which was great. It was wonderful to see all the folks in person, or some of the folks, I should say. If we actually had all the volunteers in San Carlos there for the dinner, we'd probably have to rent out some very large hall. So, but the folks that were there, that was great. I, too, Barbara and I, had an opportunity to attend Chickens' Ball on Saturday. We actually co-judges with Ron and Gail, and Mike Tierney and his wife. That was a lot of fun. We have some very talented -- there's a lot of talent in San Carlos, and it comes in many different forms. And this time, we got to see some of it up on stage, which was pretty impressive. One thing that I did want to mention in passing, at our budget meeting in the library, Matt had presented a brief analysis of a hypothetical pension situation, demonstrating that there are some problems even under the current set of revised pension assumptions. I dug through that in some depth, and actually, I think there are a few little glitches in it and one sort of conceptual issue in it. When I rerun the analysis, actually, it shows that, as I guess I would have expected, the revised pension formulas actually are -- meet the needs, basically, based on the assumptions, which is not to say that there is not an issue with unfunded pension liabilities in California, because the revisions were made in reaction to that. So the problem still exists, but I think going forward, it'll be not as bad as we had perhaps thought. I wanted to ask whether or not the council would be willing, at a future meeting, to have staff provide us with an update. I think of it as kind of a long-range plan for traffic in San Carlos, or maybe a medium-term plan. What I mean by that is, we have a number of projects that, if they all move forward, such as Wheeler Plaza, the Transit Village, and the Landmark Hotel site, there's going to be a lot of construction going on all at the same time, or there'll be a lot of overlap anyway. And I, for one, would like to see how that all sort of fits together and what things we might be able to do to minimize traffic problems that that's going to create, and at the very least, what we should do to educate the citizenry about what's lurking in the future. So is anybody else interested in seeing something like that? If no, then I will bring it up in the future.
Well, I'm happy to talk about traffic. It sounds like something that is consistent with some of the things we came up with our strategic planning process. I mean, that was my sense. I don't know if there's a specific item there, but I know that we've identified traffic specifically. And then I don't know what the timing is of those projects, but I certainly think that, as you know, those projects are coming down the Pike, and if there are specific things that are going to, you know, be disruptive to traffic flow, we should talk about it. I just don't know if there's, you know, we should take the time right now to do a specific traffic plan or study. Or I guess I'm looking for a little clarification on what specifically you want.
Yeah. Not a -- I think I probably did use the term "traffic plan." Let me rephrase that as, I'd like a report on what the community can expect over the next few years, if, as I hope will happen, all of the construction that we're trying to trigger actually goes forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a reasonable thing to talk about.
Okay. Is that a reasonable -- I'm assuming if it's a report on already planned projects, that it shouldn't be that resource-intensive to pull together? And certainly, I'm not envisioning something that would be that resource-intensive.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're looking for. I'm going to need the opportunity to go back and talk with our Public Works Director and our city engineer.
Sure.
If there's an issue, I'll bring that back to council to discuss this discussion further.
Sure.
And if not, we'll come forward with a plan to have that report.
Just to point a clarifier, are you looking for a timetable, more or less?
No, he's looking for a timetable and what the effect of that, all that stuff is going to be.
Right, right. See, because originally, you know, like Wheeler Plaza, had the RDA's not been blown up, that would have probably been moving forward earlier. And, you know, Landmark Hotel sort of came out of, was a target of opportunity, something we wanted to do, but it's a targeted opportunity. It just sort of by accident, there's three large projects that are all moving forward, more or less, at the same time. And we all know how bad the traffic gets around here already, and I just would like to sort of think through what that's going to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Before you leave this subject, you had mentioned the spreadsheet that I had provided at the library, and I just wanted to comment two things on that. Number one, I had made changes to it, because I found a few glitches in it myself, and I provided staff with an updated version, I believe.
Oh, I'd like to see that.
And it was supposed to, I thought, was going to go to the council. I wasn't sure. Actually, no. Now I correct that. I was going to bring it, and I did not do that, because the city manager and I felt it would be better if I brought it. So I will bring it the next time. And likewise, I think it would be helpful if we had a copy of whatever else you've done, so that we could compare the two and churn through the numbers, because, you know, I definitely put some effort into that. I do think it's accurate, and it's even more accurate now that I've gone through and found some glitches and corrected those, so.
Fair enough. Well, maybe you and I should talk offline about it. But either way. Last item was, I think we all probably have been getting input from our fellow citizens who live on the East Side, basically dealing with the impact of the Old County Road improvements that are underway right now. And specifically, there's an issue involving the turn lanes and the through lanes at Old County Road and Holly. And I just wanted to mention, I have had some conversations with Jay and with Jeff about this. I just want to hope that, or ask that staff push that through to resolution as quickly as we can, whatever we end up doing, and make sure we communicate it to people about why we're doing what we end up doing, because there's an awful lot of unhappy people out there right now. And I'd like to try and address that if we can, receive that addressed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I hate to keep following up on you, but I was going to follow up on that one, too, now that you've brought it up, because I experienced that today, this afternoon, and I did talk to the city manager about it, and he was going to have me talk to the Public Works Director. Haven't yet done that, but I, too, have some concerns there about, especially the access. It appears, the way things are put in the ground right now in anticipation of some islands, that there might be a choker going on, where you can see the left-hand turn lane, you can see the queue up, you can see that there's like two cars in it, and it can hold four or five, but you can't get there. And if that's the case, I think before we pour concrete and make everything permanent, that might be something that wants to have another look.
Okay. All right. With that, I think we are to the point where we let staff have an opportunity to make whatever comments Jeff wishes to make about the state of the city.
And I have no additional comments this evening.
Nothing happened?
Nothing at all. It's not on this agenda, pretty much. That's close to true.
Fair enough. Next item is, we are doing a proclamation, so I'm going to wander down into the well. This is actually very appropriate, since I was just making those comments about, and Matt was talking about all the discussions we're having with you. This is, folks may not realize this, but May 18th to 24th, we're going to recognize as National Public Works Week, or I should say, we're going to recognize National Public Works Week in San Carlos. Many of you probably don't even know all of the work that gets done by the Public Works Department in order to keep the city flowing smoothly and working smoothly. There are issues, like we were just talking about with Old County and traffic, but the vast majority of things you never see, and actually, you never want to see. And that's the job of the Public Works Department, basically, to make sure that all takes place out of the public eye. So I won't read this whole thing, but Jay, it's been great working with you and your team. And, you know, I always get a thrill out of going down to talk to the guys in the corp yard. So keep up the good work. Enjoy your week, but not too much, because there's a lot of stuff around town that needs to get fixed.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this proclamation, while it's something that takes place on a national level, the engineering staff and the maintenance crew at the corp yard really appreciate council's recognition and their continued acknowledgement of the good work that's happening there and the money that they're investing in our city. And we'll do our best to continue to put that money to good use, put projects on the ground, make sure we're taking care of maintenance the way it needs to be done. So I thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Matt, did you want to add something?
Not on that item, but I was wondering if the city manager might want to say anything about the new counter reopened and all the permit center?
As the council is aware, they had approved a project last year to redo the Community Development Department public interface, and it also included some fire sprinkler improvements and those kinds of things. But we have opened the new counter to the public right over here in City Hall. I believe the Community Development Department, and correct me if I'm wrong, Al, will be holding an open house at some point, so you can look for that announcement. I know the staff and I are very pleased with how it turned out, and so far, the comments that we've got from the public have all been very, very positive. I think it's brought a lot of life into the lobby here in City Hall and has marked a very sizable improvement in customer service and how we interact with the public here in this facility.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for pointing that out, Matt.
Yeah, sure.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is actually public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So if you have filled out one of the speaker cards but wish to talk on an item that's on the agenda, we will get to that in due course. This is for people who wish to address us on topics that are not agendized. As of this moment, I actually don't have any speaker cards for anybody who wants to speak on something off the agenda. I have quite a few of people who wish to speak.
That's not on the agenda. OCR is not -- they're different. They're totally different.
Oh, okay. Then --
I wouldn't fill it out for like not to speak. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Then I was mistaken. Ben, Ben Fuller, please come up and address us about Old County Road.
Ben Fuller, President, Greater York, San Carlos. Next time, if I fill out an item, please let me know in advance if you're going to try not to let us talk. This is about Old County Road. This is not about the shuttles, which is another issue that's going to be discussed. All I wanted to say is, I wanted to reiterate what Mark and Matt have said, which is that we've gotten dozens of comments related to the right-hand turn lane, southbound on Old County Road being merged with the straight lane, while the left lane never has any cars in it. And the big question I think we all have is, how was the decision made in the first place? What logic was used to make that decision, and how is it going to get resolved? And I've been asking all around. No one seems to know the answer to it. Now, I do want to put this into context. We're very appreciative of all the work being done on Old County Road. All you guys have supported that, all the funding going into making that a better neighborhood. One thing to be said, though, is Old County Road is a really vital thoroughfare for all of us. We've been hearing from Belmont. We've been hearing from folks in the neighborhood and people on the west side. All seem to agree that they want to have access to that road and be able to have the same ability to travel on the road, whether to go to Home Depot, to go to Belmont, or even to get through from Holly Street or Ralston, in the event that they don't want to take Holly Street off the 101. So our big point is, please protect our thoroughfare. We know you have a lot of decisions around that, and we look forward to hearing what you're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
My name is Aldous Zeebrugge. I'm a resident of East San Carlos. And my opinion probably has about as much weight as flotulence in a hurricane, but nonetheless, what I don't understand is what's going on. I have not ascertained if there's any people here from Caltrain or San Trance, but why do we have to have this continuous hedging in the projected ideas of building? All of a sudden, we saw these tremendous plans, and all these conclusions came to some kind of a coherent resolution as to what the buildings are going to look like, where the entries and the egresses are going to be. And all of a sudden, if there's a change, they want a change done, but it's going to take away so many parking places, which we now seem to have an excess of parking places in the pay lot as it is. But now, this is considered an impediment. Why do these people continue to throw in, and why is it allowed for them to throw in these minute changes in procedures and what they wish to have done, when we don't have a solid conclusion that's not going to occur for years? As it stands right now, the fast train system or electric train system is totally up in the air. It seems to be a favorite thing of Governor Brown, but it's just money that's thrown up in the air, and it's useless. And this whole thing, it just seems to be a holding pattern, a waste of time. And the more time that goes by, the less the plans we have in place are going to be of any value. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council on items that are not on the Step up. If you wouldn't mind filling out a card, giving it to Crystal at some point. You don't need to do it first. Oh, you did?
What's your name, and we can find it.
Is it this Arguello Park? Okay.
Do we have that here?
Yeah, I apologize about that. We weren't sure which one that was.
Okay.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. Okay, so that is Crestview. And that is Arguello Park?
I'm not sure if that's Crestview.
Okay. Yes, Rick Bradley.
Yes, Rick Bradley. San Carlos resident since 1988. I just have a quick item, and I, something hopefully that we can get some information on. So I live close to Arguello Park. It's a beautiful park. It's very well-done. There's a semi-permanent fence up during part of the baseball season year. Sort of impedes access fully to the park. I think the fence allows access into the main part of the park through two small portals that are about three, four, or five feet wide. Fence is up 24 by 7 throughout most of the season. According to the parks, it's Commission or Parks Group, it's part of the use permit for a semi-permanent fence. So I just want to submit to the council, it's a little unusual to have that. I don't think there's any other park in the city that has a semi-permanent fence up 24 by 7 through course of a league. I'm just wondering if there's something we could do to make it maybe similar to what AYS does, where they take their soccer goals off the field after a game, and they bring them back on during a game. It's a pretty simple fence to take up and down. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Jeff, would staff be able to talk to Mr. Bradley and follow up on that?
Absolutely. I'll have our Parks and Rec Director, Christine Boland, do that.
Thank you.
There has, if I may, Mr. Mayor. There's been correspondence. Rick has been, I don't know if it's the whole council, but definitely I've been getting emails that he's been going back and forth with Ms. Boland on this issue.
Okay.
And so I think this one, he had some other issues about signage and other things. Those all seem to be resolved. I think this one is still outstanding.
Mr. Malpe, Jeff, can you look into this?
Yeah, and I think what we would do is probably refer the matter to the Parks and Recreation Commission and see if that helps resolve the issue and go from there.
All right. Fair enough. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent calendar. These are items that are, this is a set of items that are normally approved en masse without discussion, although council members can ask that individual items be taken off for separate consideration, and the public can actually make that request of the council as well. Are there any items that my colleagues wish to take off the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, we will call the roll. Oh, sorry.
We have to have a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items 8A through 8. I believe, aye.
Second.
Is there a second? There is a motion and a second. Thank you. I don't think I've ever been in a meeting where the consent calendar wasn't done, but you're absolutely right.
Don't push it.
No, you're right. Crystal, if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcut?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to new business. And Jeff, help me out here. I just want to make sure we're taking 9B first, correct?
We are taking 9B first. I think it's going to complicate a little bit, maybe some of the forms if people put A or B. You might want to clarify as you have public comment tonight.
Yeah, I was planning on doing that when we get to that point. Thank you. Actually, I'll do it now, just so people aren't in suspense. Since we're taking these items out of order, and because I think some people may have been a little confused as to which they wanted to comment on, either 9A or 9B, my preference would actually be that we simply allow people to comment on the first item that we're going to be talking about, provide their public input there. If there's anybody who wishes to withhold their comment specifically for 9A, which is the second item we're going to talk about, we'll certainly honor that. But my thought was to give people an opportunity to make their comment earlier rather than later. So with that, Mr. Malpe, Jeff? later. So with that, Mr. Malpe, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jeff Malpe, City Manager. Let me give you just a very brief presentation this evening to kick things off before we turn it over for public comment and questions and council discussion and all that. As you recall, at our last City Council meeting, we had a lengthy presentation, a lot of public comment about the North Crestview site and how that relates to a proposal made to the city by the San Carlos Elementary School District to possibly swap a portion of Terra Linda for the North Crestview site. We outlined about nine options. There's, quite frankly, probably more that could be parsed from these nine, but here they are. I'm not going to read them off for you. I think everybody probably at nauseam can recall what those are. Picture of North Crestview. This is really just in case during your discussion or questions or interaction with the public tonight, you want to refer back to a picture of the site. This is it. This is the portion of Terra Linda that we're talking about. Again, in case you want to refer back to it as part of this item later on. And here's really what the staff is hoping that the council can focus their discussion and get us some direction on to move forward so that we can talk to the school district if that's what the council would like us to do. The first question, a really big question, is is the council in favor of the school district building a charter learning center school at the North Crestview site? That's what the school district has proposed to do. Of course, if you are, there's some questions below that we would look for direction from the council. If you're not, that really sort of, I think, provides us at least enough direction to go back to the school district on, and we can talk about any other possible uses for the North Crestview site at some other time. If the council is in fact interested in seeing a charter learning school up at the North Crestview site, sort of the three big options that we see, of course, the land swap as it was proposed by the school district, and there could be, you know, a land swap plus cash and all those various subcategories of that proposal. There's the possibility of just selling the property to the school district, and there's a discussion of leasing the property to the school district or any other options you might have. Those are the things that we're looking for direction tonight during the council discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have either now or during the discussion. We have plenty of staff here to help. And with that, I'm going to get out of the way so you can dive in.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions for Jeff or for staff before we take public comment? Yes, Matt?
In the staff report on this item, you talk about the sequoia cost, environmental cost. If we were to take the Crestview site and change it either into something for the school district or new housing. And then there's also, if we did a land swap, we'd have the same thing at TL. We'd have environmental sequoia cost and so forth. However, if we were to keep the Crestview site as it is, designated as it is, and somewhere down the road, we decided we're going to improve that site for athletic field use of some kind, soccer field, baseball, whatever, so it looks, you know, perhaps a little bit more like Highlands instead of like what it is, would we have sequoia costs then as well?
Yes, we would.
Would they be comparable to one or the other of those sites, the TL site and the Crestview site?
I think they would be comparable, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just to jump in there, just to follow up on that, because I want to make sure I understand. So I thought that the sequoia analysis and hence costs associated with TL would only get triggered if we were to do something with the property. In other words, the swap itself would not necessarily trigger a sequoia review. Because the use wouldn't, at least initially, the use wouldn't have changed.
Well, there's a fine point there that I'd probably let the city attorney expand on, and that's foreseeable change.
Yeah, the issue at the TL site is if the council entertains the idea of acquiring the TL, the portion of the TL campus, the council has an option to conduct sequoia in advance of the transfer of that property so that it would know for certain what the sequoia review would allow and the costs of any potential mitigations, the impacts that would occur related to traffic or other impacts related to that type of a project. The foreseeability that the city manager was talking about is really what are we proposing to put there? So what's foreseeable would be, as part of that analysis, we'd want to see, well, is there a full build-out with the maximum potential amenities that would be at a park, or is it a more limited one? So the scope of the project would need to be analyzed initially. The reason it's significant, the council doesn't have to do the sequoia before closing on that transaction, if you will, but it could have an impact on council wanting to know in advance what was, from a sequoia standpoint, what could be built there. You might want to know that before you close the transaction, but not legally required.
I see. So in other words, it would be informing, I'd almost describe that as informing our sense of value broadly defined, not necessarily value to developer, but value as a park.
I think that's a fair statement.
Okay. And it's not required. It would be, do we want to inform ourselves? So we...
Right. And just to be clear, sequoia would be required at some point from changing the baseline conditions at the site, but it's, the council might want to know in advance before they close escrow what could be built there considering the scope of a project that you were contemplating.
Okay. That makes sense. Other questions for staff?
Not at the moment.
Okay, not at the moment. In that case, we are going to move into public comment. We have quite a few speakers who want to address the council. I'm going to use the same system, those of you who are here for our special meeting back in April on this topic, using cards. We give each speaker roughly two minutes to address us. We ask that you honor that time, basically because there are a whole bunch of people who want to address us, and we want to be fair to everybody. When we get to around two minutes, I will, we're a little bit shy of that, I'll hold up a yellow card. When you get past two minutes, I will hold up a red card, which means you should wrap up very quickly. One other thing that I didn't mention the last time we had such a large group together, we do ask that members of the audience not applaud when, or boo, I suppose. I haven't heard anybody boo, but react to speakers, just out of respect for each other's differences of opinion. And as I said, we want to maximize the time we have to hear from you because that's really what this is for. So what I'm going to do is announce each person individually, and I'll do the person who will come up to speak to us and then the next person in line so they can be getting ready. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, because effectively what we're doing is consolidating public comment for these two items together, it is your choice. If I call on you and you say, no, I want to wait for the second of these items, the actual resolution, just let me know. I'll put your card aside and we'll move on to somebody else. With that said, to get started, the first speaker, and I apologize for messing up names because I'm going to do that. The first speaker is Alisanda Rozinko, followed by Ruth Ellen Harris. You'd like to wait? Okay. In that case, followed by Jeff King.
I'd actually like, I originally wanted to speak on 9A, now 9B, but I would like to speak on this issue. And this is, I want to object to the wording of the staff report in referring to the Crestview property as a site. North Crestview is a park, and you referred to it as a park in your last staff report, and I would ask that you continue to refer to it as a park, because that is what it is. It is not a site. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I will put your card aside for that. So Jeff King, followed by Sarah Sorenson.
Hi, my name is Jeff King. We're charter parents. Our son, Zane King, is six and three-fourths old. I just wanted to point out, one of the cool things about charter that's a core to the learning program is around environment and care for community. So if this all can come together and the community can support this, I can assure you that charter would be a unique partner and a very valued partner in the spirit of, you know, environmental stewardship, care of community. My wife, last week, actually, taught the garden care. There's a unique garden there, charter. It's a beautiful place. It's an integral part of the teaching program, and you should check it out and just kind of see what it's about. But I think that is actually one of the reasons we felt lucky to be, to sort of win the lottery of going to charter, was unique programs like this. Environmental stewardship, care of community are by no means, you know, made up. It's an integral part of the school.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. So Sarah Sorenson, followed by Bryce Cook.
Hi, I'm Sarah Sorenson. I am a member of the community, resident, and AYSO board member. So I'm here to kind of talk a little bit about what this potential land swap would mean to the community of San Carlos. As a city of good living, we really want to be promoting healthy, active lifestyles within the community. AYSO is one of the biggest athletic organizations in San Carlos with 1,600 kids, 600 volunteers, representing approximately 1,100 families in the community. It's about promoting an everyone plays philosophy. It's about enabling kids to start early and have a lead and active and engaged lifestyle. A big part of that is having the fields and facilities that can accommodate the community and accommodate the needs of our children. If anybody has gone out on the weekend to, during a soccer season, and even during the week during practices, they'll see that the fields are maxed out in terms of their use. We've got kids playing. We've got parents cheering. We've got grandparents and relatives and friends and families all out there on the fields, working to support their kids having fun, living an active lifestyle, and starting the exercise patterns that they can take throughout their lives. If we don't consider the referendum and a potential land swap, we will be losing fields at Heather and facilities at TL, which will have an impact on our community. Where, as I mentioned, we're already oversubscribed, so a small field at charter, keeping the land that we have available and open to the community to use as fields, and eventually maybe developing TL for more, would go a long way to help us meet the needs of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Bryce Cook, followed by Matt Coet.
Thanks for the opportunity, gentlemen, to speak this evening. I was in one of these sub-meetings regarding the Crestview issues, and as a Realtor, it's usually not a good idea to talk about anything political. But one thing I do want to point out, there were two major statistics that came up, and this is regarding changing demographics and affordability. Ron Collins mentioned he was in an affordability seminar, and that's a big part of the community here, is the lack of affordability. About, I'd say about three years ago, in my open houses and my clients, they were all from Burlingame and Palo Alto, because we became the new it location. Right now, the Crestview community has relatively quiet and child-free environment up in the hills, and I just wanted to throw two statistics at you that were important to probably this whole topic. One was, on Thursday, there was a sale of a home. I don't want to be too specific because it's not an MLS yet. Three-bedroom home, 2,000 square feet, sold for over $1.8 million, almost to 1.9. Now, that's a massive number, given that that was kind of a moderate home. It was not brand-new construction. And that's to live down in the lower part of San Carlos. Almost $2 million, and it's going to get worse. I had a open house on Sunday up around Club, and the price was just about $1 million, and the crowd that came in was, thank you, was over 90% first-time home buyers. So I just, that demographic's going to change. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Bryce. Next up is Matt Coet, followed by Kate Wilmington. Good evening, Matt.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. My name is Matt Coet, and I'm a 16-year San Carlos resident and also the board chair of San Carlos Charter Learning Center. And I wanted to address just a few aspects of the charter program, specifically as regards some of the discussion that's gone on in the last month about charter. I wanted to give a few facts about our enrollment history and projections. Four years ago, in 2010, enrollment was 301, and it's grown to 346 now. Over the next six years, it will be advancing towards 396. And in 2010, our out-of-district enrollment percentage was 29%. That's dropped this year to 19%, and we're projecting over time that will drop further towards 10%, and that's probably about where it's going to level out. About a fourth of our out-of-district enrollment are staff children, and that's consistent with all of the public schools in San Carlos, where we give staff the opportunity to enroll their children in our schools as a way to attract and retain quality staff. And another significant fraction, I don't know if it's quite about a quarter of our out-of-district enrollment, are people who live in San Carlos City but not in the district. And so there's that non-overlap area, particularly to the south of Britton Avenue and some on Club Drive. One other aspect I wanted to talk about is our car traffic. CLC has a very high percentage of carpooling. As a K-8 school, we have a large number of siblings, a higher rate of siblings than the other public schools in town. We've also institutionalized a carpool match. We have a strong carpooling culture. My best estimate now is that we have about 150 cars coming onto our campus a day for CLC, and that I expect that even when our enrollment maxes out at 400, we'll still be under 200 cars per day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Kate Wilmington, followed by Jason Gish. And thank you, Jason, for putting the pronunciation guide on there.
My name is Kate Wilmington, and I'm the former president of the San Carlos Education Foundation and the former PTA president at Heather Elementary, and I've lived here since 1999. Educational quality is something that's really important to me, as you can tell from my past years of service. Parks are also important to me. I don't know if you guys know this, but I won a award from the City of San Carlos for helping out on Burton Park Phase 1. I'd like to talk to us a little bit about the impacts of overcrowding on educational quality, because I think that's something that's largely been left out of the conversation up until now, but I think it's very important. So overcrowding significantly will significantly impact scores in math and reading. There's studies that support this that I can send to you. Overcrowding also led to stressful working conditions and higher teacher absenteeism and lower teacher retention. So one of the things that makes our schools great is our teachers. You don't want to lose teachers because they're stressed out because of overcrowding situations on their campuses. If you take a look at White Oaks, you'll see that the ratio of asphalt to plants is a lot smaller than maybe a modern parking lot. Asphalt is kind of king there, and that's no fun. When I was a little kid, I pulled the stems out of the honeysuckle and ate it. I picked blackberries off the vine. I held buttercups under my chin to see whether I was in love with somebody or not, and I built daisy chain crowns, right? These are experiences that I want my kid to have, and without green spaces at our schools, they're not going to. Our kids are in school nine months a year for 30 to 40 hours a day, right? Without those green spaces, they don't have access to those experiences. One of the things I'd also like to bring up is that there's this awesome quote from Burroughs that says, "Knowledge without love will not stick." He's talking a lot about how kids need a love for nature before they can really learn about nature. And I thought that was awesome. Is that my time up? Is that why you held up that card? Oh, okay. I've got a lot more studies that I will send to you that talk about all of the impacts of small amounts of nature on kids' ability to... on kids' ability to learn, and I think that they're really valuable. So I'd hate to build more schools like White Oaks because we cram campuses on them. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. Jason Gish, followed by Tammy Gordon.
Thank you for your time. My name is Jason Gish. I've been San Carlos resident for about 16 years now, and I want to talk a little bit about some of the, the points I've been hearing in opposition to the land swap. The first thing is actually, so I was interested to hear the comment earlier about North Crestview Park. So I took a quick look at the San Carlos website that talks about our parks, and there's actually no mention of that. So I think that's more of a convenient, we don't want to lose something called a park, but I'll let that go because I think the city clearly has any opinion on that. I've heard some comments about, well, this is a remote site, right? It's not a great place for a school. And I'll grant you, it's not in downtown, but honestly, I think that's one of the better parts about it. Also, San Carlos is just not that big. We're talking about a site that is actually only two miles away from where we're all standing and sitting right here today. And actually, one convenient thing about putting the Charter Learning Center on this site is that it is the only one that's not a neighborhood school, so there's no expectation that the kids are all going to be able to walk there. The fact that we do a lot of carpooling actually should help alleviate any traffic concerns, plus the fact that Crestview is about the widest road in San Carlos I can think of, and there are a lot of access points to it, going up Club, going up Britton, going up Melendi, and even coming up Crestview itself. So hopefully, we'd be able to alleviate any traffic concerns, which I recognize there would be additional traffic there. But I think a key point to understand and remember is that we're not talking about whether or not to add 400 students to the city traffic. We're talking about where to put them. And currently, there is a lot of traffic at the existing school sites. At any of the other potential sites, we're talking about putting this school, as opposed to if you put it up at Crestview, you're actually spreading it out throughout the city. And there's just no way around the fact that those kids are here. And the last thing I want to talk about very quickly is just the concept of whether or not we have, the city has money to build additional facilities at the TR-Linda site. I agree, they don't have it today. I think we could talk about it in the future, but keeping that site the way it is exactly right now still adds value to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next up is Tammy Gordon, followed by William Friedman.
Hi, my name is Tammy Gordon. I have been a San Carlos resident for seven years. Moved here before I had kids. Specifically, it came down to the schools. We're looking for schools, the small class sizes, and I know we're not alone. Obviously, we just heard, you know, real estate is going through the roof. There are a lot of young families moving here specifically for the schools. The problem is getting worse, right? So we need more space for schools. We have too many school-age kids for the properties we have right now, and obviously, that's part of what our town has to offer and will continue to offer. The long-term health of our schools and the community is at stake here. We need the space to make sure that our kids can continue learning in these small environments and not trying to push too many kids all in the same spot and really assuming that they'll get a quality education when you're creating all of this together. This land swap achieves that, and I think, I beg you to look at the long-term view, not just looking what happens for the next couple of years. Look 20 years down the line. Look at how our community is evolving, how it's such a great place to live, and are we more likely to regret creating the extra school space or not doing it? And I think that we'd really regret not doing it, not creating this great place for our, our children of San Carlos to go to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Next up is William Friedman, followed by John Lillygren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Bill Friedman. I'm a 15-year resident and homeowner here in San Carlos. I have two kids who are finished with Charter Learning Center, so they've benefited from the great education that has developed in that school that's been in our community now for 20 years, and will be here for many years to come, providing a unique and different opportunity for San Carlos residents to have school choice within a number of great schools in our community. I'm also happy to see so many different people here with diverse points of view that feel very strongly about four really important topics: traffic, open space, schools, parks. I know this is a very big issue for all of us. I know it's a very big issue for all of you, and you guys have the challenge of helping us figure out how to marshal the city resources in support of city initiatives that maybe aren't fully aligned with the school district. But in the end, we all live here. We all send our kids to schools, those of us who have kids, and we just need to focus on the question that's at hand, which, again, it's nice to see that's up here and we can all look at it. Are we willing to put our energies into asking some tough questions about where to put 400 desks that need to exist somewhere within our boundaries? Our boundaries are not growing. We have a fixed number of square footage. We have perhaps a lot of open space for a city of our size, but we also are really tight on schools and on parklands now. So, you know, we have this awesome responsibility to plan for the future and how to use those resources, as well as the remaining resources that are around the area. Open space exists beyond Crestview, between the 280 boundary. We also have Edgewood Park that's nearby. So there is a lot of open space, and, you know, I can't believe myself as a longtime Sierra Club member and, and active participant, but perhaps open space is not the biggest need in our community right now.
Thank you, William. Next up is John Lillygren, Lillygren, excuse me, followed by Judith Salidi? Okay. Then followed by Bill Nieto. Next issue as well. Hang on a second, sir. It doesn't count against your time. Mark Haisloop. All right, so Mark, you'll be up next. John, we're all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm John Lillygren, resident of San Carlos, and I am a USA Track and Field official, and I work with kids through college-age athletes. So I'm for a healthy lifestyle, as was mentioned earlier, but I oppose converting North Crestview Park from, to other uses. We have limited open space. I think that the space that we have available, we want, once you change that use, it's gone forever. I think that you should consider other alternatives, but I support leaving North Crestview Park as a park. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mark Haisloop, followed by Carol Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an important resolution that's before you tonight, insofar as it's recognized as such in law, because it takes a supermajority for you to put this on the ballot. It takes four of the five of you, not just a simple majority. It's a very important decision. The problem is, the resolution that is drafted is incredibly flawed and hopelessly flawed. Section 3844(c) of the Government Code, which is the applicable statute, states, "The resolution shall state the disposition which the legislative body proposes to make of the park." This resolution doesn't state the disposition. It says that the city council intends to sell, exchange, lease, or otherwise dispose of. I think that when I walk into the voting booth to vote yes or no on this resolution, I'd like to know what I'm voting for, and I think all these other people would like to know as well. To the people who are in favor of sports fields, charter schools, parks, and everything, this resolution doesn't get you what you want because it doesn't say what we're voting on. I think you have to clean this up. You have to make a decision about what the disposition's going to be. And in looking at the schmorgasbord that Jeff has spent a lot of time coming up with, I think we have to realize that you can't do all things for everybody. You have to come up with a specific proposal. And we can't make a gift, legally or otherwise, of millions and millions of dollars to the school district. We've heard a number of 18 to 20 million for this site proposed. Right over here, the, the half-acre on the corner of Cherry and Chestnut went on MLS last week for 8 million. I think that the 20 million is, is, is light. I think that you have to look at this resolution as flawed, and I think you have to make a decision about what the disposition truly is, and then let us, the people, vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Carol Elliott, followed by Bob Black. Carol? You, you wish to speak on the other one. That's fine. Followed by Bonnie McClure. Okay, Carol, you're up.
Mayor Albert and members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Carol Elliott. I'm the vice president of the San Carlos School Board. On behalf of the board, I want to reiterate our appreciation for your thoughtful deliberations on the proposed land swap. It's an important issue for not only our schools but for our community as a whole. The conversations that you're having tonight are an opportunity to address our community needs with a 20, or with a 30-to-50-year lens. Demographic and employment trends are leading to the increased urbanization of the entire peninsula, including San Carlos. This leads to great challenges for both the city and the school district as we grapple with how to use our limited resources for the best and highest use for all of our residents, both today and tomorrow. As you weigh the options before you, I strongly encourage you to move forward with a referendum and to give your full consideration to the proposed land swap in order to not only help alleviate overcrowding at our already impacted schools, but to benefit the entire community by reducing traffic along our most congested corridor and by creating more space for play for all of our residents. The alternative is not a positive one and will impact our community for decades to come. We appreciate the solid working relationship that currently exists between the city and the school district. The district supports many city-related activities, including the use of our facilities for parks and recs programs, the use of field space for sports, the use of tennis courts at Arundel, and the use of the Heather Dogg Park for the benefit of the entire San Carlos community. The school board has also supported the city's economic development efforts at Wheeler Plaza and other projects. The city has been an equally supportive partner, in particular with your work around traffic and safety issues, and we want to thank you for that. The bottom line is that both agencies exist to serve the citizens of San Carlos, and when we work together, we do a better job at that. I have tremendous confidence in the ability of the school district and the city to work together on this. We are a partnership that is working and that makes San Carlos a better place to live. I urge you to take this partnership to the next level. Put the referendum on the ballot, and let's work together on finding a solution for our schools and for our residents. Let's work together on a plan for the future of San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Bonnie McClure, followed by Kevin Statenfield.
Honorable mayor and councilman, I assume you've all read the letter from the Sierra Club in opposition to the proposal of selling the open-space parkland designated as North Crestview Park. So I'm not going to go over those items. As a 55-year resident of San Carlos and former softball manager and a soccer coach, I realize the need for fields. However, in the past, the school district has cooperated with the city in the use and maintenance of school fields. I propose that we continue to do so at TL, without giving away city open-space parkland to the school district. My teams played on the upper field at TL Middle School. That field is not a fair trade for the land on Crestview, which provides a vista to the vast open space to the west and open space necessary for the density of the housing surrounding it. More to the point, once the city legally converts the Crestview property from parkland, the council would not be obligated to trade it to the school district, but could sell it to the highest bidder, Mr. Heslop's point. That would most likely be a developer of housing units. That would be in direct violation of the current zoning, which limits the density of that area of our city to the current number of units. That would make our ratio of parkland to housing units even worse than it is now, and we have a poor ratio. We need density of housing, and we need new schools planned adjacent to public transportation, not up in the hills forcing more automobile traffic.
Thank you, Bonnie. Kevin Statenfield, followed by Aldous Ziebergs. Oh, you already spoke? Okay, thank you. Followed by Nancy Ziebergs. Oh, sorry. Followed by John Buchanan. All right, good. Kevin, you're up.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Statenfield. My family and I have lived here for about 16 years, and I have two active boys, 11 and 9 years old. I'm here to speak for, in support of the proposal for the Crestview land swap with the San Carlos School District for all the reasons people have talked about, maintaining strong schools, better spreads of traffic, and options to increase field space. In particular, I want to go into the detail on the field space issue. I'm a youth sports coach, and so just going over the benefits of youth sports and how the limitation in the available space is impacting our kids currently. We all know that recreation is very important for physical activity, healthy lifestyles. It also teaches life skills to kids, such as teamwork, hard work, and practice. These are all valuable life skills that, that we, we all want our kids to learn. Similar to the schools, we have had significant growth recently with all the new families and kids coming in, so we have much more kids than we had many years ago. Basically, since 2006, we're over twice as large as we used to be. AYSO also said that they've also increased a lot, but we have not added additional field space, and so consequently, we're overcrowded. And similar to overcrowding in schools, overcrowding of field space impacts the ability to teach athletes and for them to learn. We already practice starting as much as we can from 3:30 to 10:00. Our games start as much at 8:00 AM on weekends and go to dusk. And as another example, the last few years, we've had tryouts in, in spring, we start up the new U8 teams, and we only have space for two teams right now, which is about 25 kids, both boys and girls, and we've had over 75 attend our last few tryouts, which means we've had to turn, unfortunately, turn away kids that would like to, to play, but we just don't have space for them. Consequently, they have to go to other cities or ultimately can play. So we just can't squeeze more and more kids into smaller spaces with sports. It gets dangerous, and, and kids don't learn. So, and then the, the other problem is, is the alternate solutions will cause permanent loss in field space. So in conclusion, I urge the city council to look at the bigger picture and work with the SCSD on the land swap for the betterment of the overall San Carlos community, and help preserve excellent schools, minimize traffic, and add additional much-needed field and park space for recreational activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. John Buchanan, followed by Elizabeth Dyer.
Mayor Albert and members of the council, my name is John Buchanan. I object to the resolution that you've got before you, because on its face, it is not in the public interest nor its convenience. Discontinuing the use of this land as park or open space for the stated intentions in the resolution implies a violation of the city's general plan, park and open space element, which requires a certain minimum acreage per thousand residents. There may be other options which would avoid reducing our inventory of this critical land usage, but those aren't specifically stated or required by the resolution. It's questionable whether we can or even should attempt such an action. A little history here now. The park open space in question was an integral part of a bitterly fought land usage controversy some 40 years ago, when I was in San Carlos, too. At its heart was the goal of many in San Carlos to limit the density of development on Crestview. The result was the inclusion of what you now know as the north and south Crestview lands as part of the plan of development to mitigate the high density of townhomes for the general benefit of everyone in San Carlos and for the specific benefit of the residents of that development. In the intervening 40 years, the density hasn't changed, and neither has the need for the benefit diminished. Your proposed resolution subverts both the issues that I've presented here. I think you ought to reconsider it and make other plans or create other situations or alternatives for the problems you and the school district face. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Elizabeth Dyer, followed by Tom Quigle.
Good evening. I had some other things that I was going to start off with, but given your time cards and some of the things that were said earlier with the statistics, the students living outside of San Carlos enrolled at the charter school, I have some questions about that based on my own experience. I'm a San Carlos resident, and I live off of Crestview, and our entire neighborhood is zoned for Redwood City Schools. I called the charter school earlier this year when I was researching options for my five-year-old who's entering who's entering kindergarten next year. And basically, I was told that they follow the San Carlos public school boundaries. Therefore, my daughter would have little to no chance of getting in since their lottery has filled up attendance with students within the San Carlos district over the last many years. I think she'd actually quoted me 10 years. So this proposal wants to take our neighborhood park and land from us for a school, but not realistically have our children attend this school. And there's a lot of irony and insult in that, and I just had to make sure you understood that. And then I guess I also naively thought that you, our elected officials, would only engage in something so significant as this only after thoughtful consideration and based on some objective measurements and criteria was completed. And so far, it's with kind of fear and disappointment that I kind of feel that this is being put together quickly without any actual studies done, environmental, financial. And it feels like it's being fast-tracked in laying the groundwork for this land swap deal with the details to be worked out later. So this is concerning, and over the four acres of precious open space that we could potentially be gambled and lost forever. And I don't want to dwell on the past or point fingers at bad decisions to sell off plots of school land, but there's certainly no reason to follow up bad decisions from the past with another quick knee-jerk reaction decision to do this.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Tom Quigle, followed by Rob Holden.
Mayor Alpert, honorable council members, and you got my name right. I stand before you to speak on behalf of the proposed land swap with the San Carlos School District. I'm a 20-year resident, raised two children, kindergarten through going off to college here. I no longer have a personal vested interest in that both of my kids are now college graduates and out of San Carlos. But I am a former trustee with the San Carlos School District, and I think I have a very strong understanding of the impact of overcrowding at our schools and the need for additional school space. So I would like to implore you to, in that capacity, it's often difficult to judge what the broader community perspective is on a highly controversial issue that draws out very passionate and well-informed opinions on both sides. It's difficult to know whether you're hearing from a very vocal minority on one side or the other, or two small vocal minorities. So what I would implore you to do is to place on the ballot a referendum with a very specific purpose, which is to determine whether the overall populace of San Carlos would favor the land swap specifically, not a general other use, and request that you do so at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Rob Holden, followed by Karen Molinari.
Good evening. My name is Rob Holden, and I'm a 16-year resident of San Carlos. And I currently am here representing also, I'm the president of the San Carlos United Soccer Club, and I'm speaking on behalf of the land swap in favor. And I wanted to just call your attention to a few things that have been eloquently discussed tonight. The biggest issue for us, as you've heard, is the lack of field space and the bigger concern that if the school district is compelled to build on Heather or Arundel, losing additional field space would just take an already terrible situation and make it almost untenable. I think this land swap provides a great opportunity to address several needs, as you all know, in considering using the four acres at North Crestview Park for a school site. Basically, clearly you've heard it, accommodating a growing student population, creating more recreational sports space utilized by thousands of San Carlos residents, alleviating and sharing traffic impacts across the city. And I also wanted to address that the current TL site, it's been discussed that it's not the ideal site. And yet, I think regardless of whether it is an ideal site or not, it is a legitimate solution that I think needs to be supported and explored. So I urge you to move to the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Karen Molinari, followed by Mike Siegel.
I think Ms. Molinari walked out for a moment. I don't know why.
I think she's... Oh, okay. We will pass to Mike Siegel. Rob Holden, I have a second card for you that must... Fine, no problem.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Just hang on a second, sir. Followed by Cecily Harris. So you're on, Mike. Thank you.
I'm Mike Siegel. I'm a 28-year resident of San Carlos. And I think arguments that I was planning to make have already been made, but repetition is the mother of learning, gentlemen. Once open space is gone, it's gone forever. Don't lose it. Keep San Carlos green.
Thank you, Mike. Cecily Harris, followed by Paul Max Payton.
Good evening. My name is Cecily Harris, and I live on Cranfield Avenue, which is in the neighborhood of both Carlmont High School and Terre-Linda. But I live in the Belmont Rebidshores School District. There's a great place for everything here in San Carlos. We need great places for our schools, parks, trails, housing, and businesses. There are also bad places. North Crestview Park is a bad place for a new charter school. First of all, undedicating parkland is a bad idea. Here in San Carlos, none of the other parks are currently dedicated as parkland. Do we want high-density housing at Arguello Park? More housing is needed. Do we want parking lots at San Carlos Avenue Park? Because more parking is needed downtown. What about building a hotel at L'Oréal? We need more hotel space. More sales taxes needed. So there are good places for park infrastructure. Possibly a new soccer field should be built on level land on the east side of town where more park facilities are needed. But we can't afford to lose any of our parkland. Secondly, there's no public transportation going up to Crestview, and it's a big hill, so the children won't be able to walk or bike to school, causing more traffic congestion and even in another part of town. The school is away from the other facilities, so they'll be in need of coordination with the other campuses around town. I honestly think that the charter school should be built on the Terre-Linda campus, where there's already school infrastructure, dense housing nearby where more students live, and there are easier opportunities for public transportation and for the kids to walk and bike to school. You know, don't get me wrong. I understand the need for a new middle school and fields and other park facilities, but I welcome them in good places in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecily. Paul Max Payton, followed by David Crabbe.
So I have eight remarks, sort of in scattershot fashion. The first one, actually, I'd like to piggyback on the commendation for Public Works. I live on Crestview, and I really appreciate the work that was done in smoothing over the road. I'm very comforted in seeing that because that gives me confidence...
Sir, could you face it? You're talking to us.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you. I'm comforted in knowing that when the dump trucks and the heavy construction equipment are done doing whatever they need to do in order to grade Crestview Park, that they'll do another really nice job on Crestview. I'm very comforted in that. Parlaying on top of that, the suggestion that there be a construction and traffic study with all the work that's going on, I think that's an excellent idea, and we need to add the Crestview work on top of the existing list of construction work that needs to be done. Third point, I'd like to quote back what's in the proposed resolution, "use as a park," the first sentence. The city general plan has, over the years, described the park in different terms, but always described it in some way as park use. Now, there's obviously a very heavy majority in terms of numbers wanting this deal to go through. So I'll quote Mark Twain, who said, "Whenever you find yourself on the side of the majority, it is time to pause and reflect." Fifth point, what we need here is really long-term vision. We need prescience and vision over what we have, which is really expedience and convenience, which is what appears to be going on. As an engineer, I was always trained to avoid irreversible decisions. And when you take a piece of land like this and essentially terraform it, that's an irreversible decision. And my wife constantly whispers into my ear, "Why don't they build a second story?" Which is an excellent idea. There are a few other little engineerisms I'd like to conclude with. If you look at the time schedule that's in this paperwork, it's really an accelerated time schedule. And I will quote two things that I've always told when I was a very young engineer. Sin in haste, repentant leisure. And lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part. And those are my eight points. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. David Crabbe, followed by Kathy Mark.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, I don't believe that either the school district nor the city has made in public a convincing case for why the residents of San Carlos should approve the abandonment of the park zoning at the Crestview site. The special meeting that was held in April simply laid out the alternatives to the Crestview site, but never explained how the idea of a land swap came to be considered in the first place. It seems that members of the council have been talking with the school district in private, but never in a public forum so that we in the public are left in the dock about the behind-the-scenes discussions. What are the pros and cons of this land swap? What is the school district's rationale for preferring to relocate the charter school on Crestview Drive? Why not relocate it to the Heather School Site or keep it in Terre-Linda and provide space for the anticipated increase in public school students? Can new classrooms be built at each of the existing four district campuses so that the new students can be evenly distributed throughout the city? And if there's a concern about new construction displacing existing playing fields, why not build the new classrooms as a second story? Previous fellow mentioned that. Rather than sprawling out into the open space. There seems to be an assumption that if the school's bill is going to be a one-story and it's going to take away playing fields. Two-story schools is not a radical idea. And what's in it for the city? If the city, if the swap goes through, the city will lose money on the transaction, still be facing considerable costs to turn the four-acre Terre-Linda site into useful playing fields. It makes no physical sense. I don't feel strongly, as some of the audience do, that the Crestview site remain as open space. I would in fact prefer the city to sell the property to a developer to build condominiums similar to those in the area. The city could then gain a substantial windfall to supplement the city's coffers, and I don't believe it would really have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood. However, if the request for abandonment is linked to a school or a freeway entrance being built on the site, I will definitely vote to retain it as a designated park, which will limit the city's options. If the city's open to other alternatives, I might be willing to abandon the park designation along with your proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Kathy Mark, followed by Ben Fuller.
Evening, gentlemen. I'm Kathy Mark, and I've lived in San Carlos for 19 years, and I do live in the Crestview Estates area. One of the things that my parents taught me was to live within my means. They started teaching me that as a teenager earning money, and I continue to teach that to my children, or my child, I should say. I only have one. You, as a council, have also learned to live within your means by making changes to the police structure and the fire structure in the city. And the school district, over the last 20 years, has disposed of three different school sites. And now, those were sold for development. Therefore, they were sold for profit. Not sure where that money went, but the land is gone and not to be returned. I think that the school district should not ask the community to pay for their past mistakes and get a prime piece of beautiful land. Like homes in San Carlos, I believe that they're able to, like many other people said, build upward. Look around all the homes in San Carlos, every neighborhood. You'll probably find at least one home being rebuilt or being built on top of itself, a second layer. As far as fields go, Highlands was supposed to be the fix for our field issue in San Carlos just a few years ago. I remember sitting in the same room and Councilman Grocott asking, "It's January 23rd, it's rainy, and it's dark. Are you going to be playing soccer?" And all the children in their uniforms yelled, "Yes, yes, we are." Unfortunately, there are many days when I go up the hill and that field is not being used, and it might not even be raining. I think that people have also mentioned that the city doesn't have the funds to build fields. So while a lot of people are supporting the new fields, and I'm not disagreeing that we need them, we don't have the funds for that. So let's keep the land the way it is. Let's, when we have the funds, let's build a beautiful couple fields up there with extended recreation for the people who walk their dogs and walk continually up there but don't have a park within walking distance. As for traffic, the only way to reduce traffic in the congested area of TL and Carlmont is to get the cars off the road. I would suggest that the city and the school district look again at a venture of school buses. They did a pilot a few years ago, which was poorly communicated and poorly coordinated, and it was a failure. I just hope that we all can learn from mistakes and not make the same mistakes again. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Ben Fuller, followed by Karen Molinari.
Hello, city council again. Ben Fuller, President of Greater San Carlos. Wanted to just say that I know this is a really complicated decision, and it feels like deja vu all over again with the transit village. But I do want to say that what's unique about this situation is that it involves a different neighborhood in San Carlos for the first time ever. I've been coming to these meetings for years and heard Bonnie try to rezone our neighborhood many different times and almost successfully do it once. And now here she is again arguing for open space for her home. But really, I think this is all about how can we work together? And so in this way, I believe Crestview has a role in this and that Crestview can do something to help out, whether it's this idea of a school or another idea. I feel like it's really important for Crestview to play their part, just like other areas of the town have to do with the transit village, the hospital, Wheeler Plaza, every project that occurs within 500 feet of my house. So Crestview, we really look forward to you guys being involved in one way or another and support you doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Karen Molinari. And then after that, I have Irene Chen, but I think you indicated you want to speak on 9A.
Just keying up some lovely photos for you to see. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, mayor and council members. My name is Karen Molinari. Thank you for bringing this issue to the forefront of our community and enabling the democratic process to occur. This is what I'm passionate about, having spent over 15 years in environmental consulting field, working to facilitate community-supported, sustainable land use planning. I'm here to ask you to put this land use issue to the voters of San Carlos. We are the city of good living, and whether you've been here for five years or 50 years, or as I am, raising the fourth generation of San Carlins in my family, we all have a vested interest, and dare I say, civic responsibility to ensure our quality of life and that we remain the city of good living. That is what drew many of us here. That is what keeps us all here. I hope we can get past thinking myopically about coveting what we have in our own backyards and thinking open-mindedly about community-wide solutions that ensure the children of San Carlos, including my children, who go to the schools, have great schools, great parks, and safe streets to grow up on, as I did over 40-plus years ago. I wanted to just spend a few seconds talking about the traffic issue on the TL, CLC, Edison Montessori, and the school district's preschool. If you're not aware, there's one campus with four schools. When I went to Terre-Linda, it was one middle school. There are over 1,000 students between those four schools. There's between 80 and 100 staff and parent volunteers daily on that campus, and we have 100 parking spaces. There's one entrance and one exit. Significant problem, difficult to solve. Every day, there's a tragedy waiting to happen. These are children running, as their parents are encouraging them, through moving traffic to come in and out of cars. This is a child that was nearly hit by a moving car. These are cars backed up, waiting for one child to arrive. This is a long line of cars trying to exit the campus.[1731.88] This is a long line of cars trying to exit the campus. This is three lanes of traffic where one is intended. This is a long line of cars waiting to get on to the campus on Dartmouth, and this is a long line of cars waiting to get into the campus. I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that this is a critical, critical traffic and safety issue here, and that I think dispersing the traffic throughout the community would be the best thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. That is it for speaker cards that I have for people who have indicated they wish to speak at this point in time. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this topic? All right.
I would, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, certainly. Thank you. James Howar?
Yes, Howar. Thank you, city council, fellow commoners. My name is Jim Howar, and I am a resident of San Carlos, and potentially impacted, if the slide was still up, residents that I just bought in November, sits on the border with the four-acre proposed park site. So I have just a couple of things that I would like to voice as my concern, as well as to ask a couple of questions regarding this particular proposal. What was the specific date that the land swap was proposed to by the city of, the school district? If it was prior to November, and I didn't know about it, I don't know that I would have bought the house. Has there ever been a previously proposed development for that property at the site? And was it thwarted through things like natural predators on the site that couldn't be removed or planned for? So I guess, the long and the short is that I'd like to voice my support of informed decision-making. 20 years in Silicon Valley, manufacturing and high-tech have really taught me to do planning. The other thing is, I've got 10 years in higher education administration in my background, where we had to deal with a 200-acre school located in a neighborhood, and it's not an easy thing to do, and I think that it takes a lot of planning. So I would ask the council that you do your part in the planning, and you keep your mind open, and I'm compelled, not just because of where I reside, but because I am a commoner here and a member of the San Carlos citizenry. And so, again, I am not necessarily opposed to a swap per se. I don't know enough about it. I haven't heard enough about it, and I'd like for you guys to help me and get the information so that I can make an informed decision when I go to the voters' booth. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council on this topic at this time? All right. Seeing that, we will go to council discussion and questions. I don't know about anybody else. I had a couple of, or a few questions that came up as a result of public comments, but I imagine others may as well. Anybody else have any questions? Matt?
So I would just like to hear from the city attorney regarding the presentation that Mark Hesloop gave.
Well, I think Mr. Hesloop's comments about disposition is that we're referring to. Well, the language, the way I read the statute as a whole, is that disposition is a general concept, and that's because, if you look at Government Code, Section 38,460, it describes what happens when, if the election were successful. It describes the land as being held by the city in fee, and that the city may sell or otherwise dispose of the property in the same manner as it may dispose of other property no longer required for municipal purposes. So the whole idea of the election, in my view of the statutory scheme, is to free the property from the park use, and the disposition does not need to be specified exactly what you're planning on doing with the property, who you're going to sell it to. You may not know that at the time you decide that, as a council, that you would like to dispose of an excess piece of parkland. I mean, and as I've said in my staff reports, this process is not intended to be easy. The statutory scheme has a number of protections for parkland. I think when you look at the scheme, having an election is actually, and the protest hearing and the process that's required under this law provides ample opportunity for the public to lodge protests, and then ultimately, at the voting booth, decide what's the best use of such a piece of former parkland.
Bob, or Matt, did you have another question? Bob?
Mr. Malp, I did not get to see that, I guess the screen that was up earlier had certain items on it. We don't have a copy of that, or do we have it in our, I don't know if it's before us, that screen? You said, "These are the summaries of items that we want to do tonight," and it doesn't seem to jive with what I'm reading in this report, so I'm trying to understand the differences.
Okay, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of general information in the staff report to help try to guide the discussion, referring back to the nine options. As you know, after staff report comes out, I have the opportunity to talk to the city council, and I've talked to you individually over the course of the last several days, as well as having conversations with the superintendent of the elementary school district. And, you know, I'm trying, in the presentation, to cut to just the basics of what I'm hoping to accomplish tonight, whereas the staff report speaks to the larger issue.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, except that I'm looking at, the staff report says summary of immediate discussion items, which is the last part of 9B, and it doesn't reflect what you had up on that, on the screen? And I'm confused about the items?
It has, it has an even broader list of topics, correct.
You mean that?
That being the staff report.
Right. I'm sorry, I apologize. Like, I don't see those key questions. They don't match up, or at least the first one doesn't match up, to anything that's on the summary of immediate discussion items, and that's where I'm confused. I'm sorry.
I don't know how to answer your question anymore specifically.
On the staff report, it says summary of immediate discussion items, and there's a list. It doesn't have the first one.
Right, I think the first one is just a very, very broad question that's sort of implied in the staff report. And I'm taking it back for the council, saying, "This broad question has still not been answered by the city council."
So I'm just trying to get your input, and I apologize, I'm not. So that's the question you want answered first?
I think that is the very first question that we need to answer, because if the answer is no...
I just want to make sure, I won't look at my little screen anymore, I'll look at that. Okay? I'm just trying to understand where we're going here. Because I'm confused, I'm on, I'm looking at this, and it doesn't have that. So I'm trying to understand what we have to do. I have no problem voting on number one, or talking about it, if that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay. Any other questions on this side?
I had just a couple more. I believe it was Mr. Buchanan who had made reference to the, moving forward with this, with this swap would be a violation of our general plan. Violation is my word, I'm not sure if he necessarily used that term. But I would, I'd like to understand a little bit more about that, and basically what the rules of engagement, I guess, are for changes to the general plan. In other words, violation implies that we're doing something we're not supposed to, and who has the authority to change it? When can it be changed? What's the process?
Well, if my staff report at the study session and this one were not clear, it's always been contemplated that a general plan amendment would be required as part of the process, whether it's to dispose of the property to, and ultimately transfer it to the district or transfer it to a developer. The district has the ability to override even our general plan designation, as I said previously, but we've always contemplated that that would have to happen. I look at the statutory scheme of 38,440 of the Government Code as an additional layer of protection for parks. So this section needs to be complied with before you can go any further. Cannot use the parkland for a school use, cannot use it, obviously, to build housing. So this is the threshold question that has to be answered by the electorate. Thereafter, again, it's always been contemplated that we would have to make some changes to the general plan, depending on the disposition of the property.
Oh, I see. But we have the authority, and a process exists for us to make such an amendment, should we decide to do so?
That's correct.
And then, my other question was more of a matter of interest. I think it was Cecily Harris who made the comment that none of the parks in San Carlos, except presumably North Crestview, are actually designated as parkland?
The latest general plan amendment, well, staff can chime in if they have a different opinion, but the latest general plan amendment describes all of the city parks as park. Previous general plans did not do that.
I see. Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Yes, Ron?
Do you have a couple of questions? Thank you. I just, I want to be clear that if you get direction from us tonight, and we proceed toward a protest hearing, does that protest hearing allow for changes to the ballot measure language at that time?
Well, that's an interesting question, and I've, and I've thought about it a lot looking at the scheme. And the question that needs to be answered at the ballot is specified in two places in the Government Code 38,440 at SEC, and it just talks about abandonment of the, let me just read it exactly here, discontinuance and abandonment of the park use for the property. It doesn't talk about anything else. It actually specifies that language, so I'd be cautious about making substantive changes to that general concept. We might be able to look at the language that basically says the same thing. We might be able to put in recitals or findings in the ordinance that would be required after the protest hearing, should the council decide to go forward. But those are, those are questions that you'll be answering really at the hearing after you receive the protests.
All right. And we could, let me make sure I'm clear on this, that, and I'm not telling, saying I'm in favor of any of these options, but one option would be to not specify what we're going to do, and simply say that we no longer want to designate it as a park. And then another option would be that we intend to either swap, sell, or lease the land to the school district. Or a third option, we're going to sell it to a private developer. Do I understand that correctly?
No, I think my read is, the question that's going to appear on the ballot will be a very simple question, but in the, the code says that you adopt an ordinance to move it towards the ballot, and typically, an ordinance is you make findings, and you also have to make some specific findings, in this case anyway, about the convenience and necessity. So you'd be making those findings, and in those findings, you could talk about potential dispositions in the specific way, but the ballot language is very specific in my reading of the code.
But when the voter goes in the, you know, gets his absentee ballot, or goes to the voting booth, do they know exactly what they're voting for?
Well, they'll have in the voter pamphlet, there's an opportunity for arguments for and against measures like this, so that'll, in all likelihood, appear in the voter pamphlet. In the meantime, there may be some actions that the council could take that would clarify what would happen. The council could put an advisory measure on the ballot that would appear at the same time, and the council could potentially adopt a companion resolution that would go with the ordinance setting the election that would specify the intention. Those are the different ways I could see, if the council wanted to express an intention, there are different ways to do that. But I think one of the things that, what we, one of the reasons this particular item is on is to try to get that threshold question about whether or not that's going to, whether or not a swap is desired, or other disposition of the property.
So it sounds to me like, no matter what we intend to do, there's at least two measures that have to go before the voters?
Well, that's an option, to put an advisory measure on is an option that you have. Under the law, the council could put an unbinding advisory measure on. It is done, I've seen it done in other circumstances like this, where the council not only is seeking direction from the voters on the ultimate question, but also to provide direction about what the voters would like to see done with, regarding that measure.
And not that we would do this, but we could put it on there for just the abandonment and nothing else?
You could do that.
Okay. And then, last question, if we, whatever's on this ballot, it goes, and let's say the advisor measure says we're going to do one of these things, and it fails, how long is it before another ballot measure could come back to do something else?
Yeah, the Government Code specifies that it's at least one year before another similar action could be taken to abandon the park use under 38,440.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
I was going to, I just want to respond. Listening to your discussion with Greg, Ron, I think one of the things, assuming we get far enough down the road, one of the things that the diocese needs to discuss is what degree of visibility and specificity about what would happen after, if the park was decertified, for lack of a better term, do we want to put in front of voters? I mean, we heard a number of public speakers say they would really like it to be very clear, and I can certainly understand that. I think if I didn't know anywhere near as much as I do now, I would want that to be very, very clear. But that's, the degree to which we do that and how we do that are questions that we're going to need to wrestle with.
And that's why I was asking the questions.
Matt, I think I heard you say you had...
Well, I didn't ask questions in line with what Mr. Collins was asking, because I, this isn't meant as a criticism, but it seemed the questions had more to do with item A rather than item B. So if I may, I'd like to ask a question regarding item A of staff.
I wasn't sure what I was...
Yeah, that's fine.
Which one, A or B, I was talking about.
I don't know that any of us do.
At this point, I think many people are confused that way, so join in.
All right. So my question on item A, when I read the resolution, I took, I was taken aback at the language that is in here that says, basically, the city of San Carlos is declaring that the public interest and convenience requires, and especially that word requires, the discontinuance of the use of the real property, blah, 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 as a park. The way I read that was, we as a city, and particularly us five up here, we see it that, you know, we're requiring the discontinuance of this property as a park. And I thought that the language would more go to the voters of, shall the property be discontinued as a park, or shall it continue as a park? And we give that kind of, you know, that question to the voters, as opposed to making this statement that makes it sound like, hey, we think it should be discontinued as a park, or we require it, now you either back us up on that or not. So my question is, do we have a choice in how this language, can we not use the word "requires," or is that legally required?
Those are findings that you need to make. At this stage of the process, which is the resolution of intention, in order to start the process and set the protest hearing, you're making this initial finding, and, you know, your call on this would be given great deference, and factual findings that you call, and if you point to facts that are consistent with that, you can make the findings and you can move the matter along.
All right. I think I got that.
Bob?
The question I had, Greg, Mr. Rubens, I guess I misunderstood, and perhaps, so if we put this, let's assume we take this resolution that you prepared and put it on the ballot, we're saying we don't want it to be a park? Is that what we're saying? If that was voted on by the voters?
This, the, what you're doing now is this resolution of intention, that you are saying, in making the resolution, that you do not believe that the property is needed for park purposes anymore. But because of the protective nature of the statute, you are, in essence, saying, we just are initiating the process, because the process requires, again, the protest hearing, and then the four votes of, two-thirds vote, but four of a five-member council before it can even get to the ballot. So it's designed to provide lots of opportunities for the public to comment, and for the council to demonstrate the findings, to move the process forward.
Again, I'm a little confused, but it's the law, and I'm always confused by that. What I'm trying to get at, I guess originally, I thought the ballot was going to basically give, be a situation where if it passed, if an item passed, whatever's written on there, passed, that this council would have a choice to do, sell, trade, buy, keep it as a park, or do something else. Now, you're implying here that we're not going to have that last option?
No, I didn't mean to imply that.
No wish, I'm sorry.
I did not mean to imply that. I did not mean to imply that, but the, the council after the election--
Uh huh.
--owns the property in fee--
Right.
--and can do anything it wants with the property, it could sell or not sell it.
Right. But the way this is written is, it discontinue the use of a park. And that's why I'm confused.
I think, I think what he's asking, if I, if I may, is, let's say that the way this is written, the ballot measure, however that's written, is approved, the voters say, yep, go ahead and decommission it. Could the council say, you know what, we decided we'd really like to keep it as a park?
The council could do that.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
It doesn't, but the way that this is written, it, it sort of implies that we're, we're, people are going to vote that it wouldn't be a park. Well, it doesn't, it doesn't give that option, it doesn't have a little line saying, however, in other words, it's a technical issue, I realize it's a technical legal issue, but it, it, it is confusing to me because I want that option.
Can I offer, and I'm not sure if this will unconfuse it or not, it, it seems to me that, that effectively what the purpose of the ballot measure is, is to lift the special set of protections.
Right.
Okay?
Right. Or to, or to put another way, to change the status quo.
Right. And that once the special set of protections are lifted, then you could actually reapply them.
Right.
I mean, it would sort of be an odd thing to do. It's like, you know, somebody might go, well, why'd you do that? Why'd you go through the trouble? But you could, okay? It's, it's solely intended to, the way it's written, to lift those special protections.
I understand that, but the wording it's using is implying that we would never be able to put this back as a park, and I understood that we would have carte blanche to do whatever we want.
Well, I think you're looking at the, you've got to look again at the statute as a whole because the resolution that I prepared is making sure that I include all the elements that the statute requires to be included.
I'm not disagreeing with any of your legal things, Mr. Rubens. I'm just saying to the, to the regular voter--
Yeah.
--to the regular Joe Smith, and I'm, I put myself in Joe Smith, I try to read the stuff, if I read discontinue as a park, that means I don't want to park there and I'll let them do whatever they want to do. But yet, that park is still an option and that's not, doesn't seem to speak to that.
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
And I'm wondering is, would it be legal to put in the words, requires the discontinuation of the designation of the North Crestview Park as a park? Could we put the word designation in there?
Well, I, I would, you could add designation, but I wouldn't replace the, the word that's in the statute because I'm trying to be very particular as what the statute says. And this resolution, just to be clear where we are in the timeline, is just starting the process going, the, the actual statute says proceedings are initiated when the legislative body adopts a resolution declaring that the public interest or convenience requires the discontinuance of the use of such land as a public park. And that, and that you intend to call a special election on that issue. So the, the question on the ballot is not going to be the same as this resolution, it's going to be a very specific question. Ballot questions aren't, aren't going to be a big, a big, long resolution with findings in it, the ballot question's going to be simple about discontinuance or abandonment, and abandonment.
I understand, but I don't agree, but I understand.
I'm thinking that in terms of, of, of trying to keep us on track with 9B as opposed to 9A, not that there's any problem with us moving back and forth between them because they are clearly very related. I think there might be some value in approaching this from, at least to start with, from the way staff has put this up here. And that's, we did have some discussion about this back in April, various people commented on the dais in, in different ways. But I think what staff is trying to get at is the fundamental, first fundamental question is, is the council willing to see the school district build a charter learning center school up at this site? Because I think, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if the answer to that question is no, then everything else becomes moot. Well, not everything else, I mean, we could still talk about de-commissioning the park to use it for other purposes. But in terms of replying to and responding to the district's proposal, which they sent us, you know, a number of weeks ago, I think that's kind of a core question.
I would agree with that. And I, I think that's a reasonable way to start the discussion, I'm happy to make some comments to that effect--
Sure.
--to kick it off. So, I mean, I, I fundamentally think what we're talking about here is, is should we have an election? Because anything that we want to do, as we've discussed, requires a vote of the people. But more to the point is, what should that election be about? And I, I want to say, you know, to folks and to my colleagues, that I, I really agree with some of the comments that they, that have been made, that if we're going to have an election, that I think the public deserves to know what they're voting for. I don't think they want to vote to have a plethora of options for this, for this site that is then reverts the council to make a decision. I think, you know, if we're going to have this big of a community conversation and if we're going to put something on the ballot, it should be for a specific proposal and, and the public should have an opportunity to vote it up or down. I personally have come to the decision to support making the North Crestview site available to the school district for, for the charter school. As I said the other night, I believe it's very important that the city have a strong relationship with the school district, and I think every San Carlos citizen has an interest in making sure we have the best possible schools. I think it's, it's a moral issue for our kids, but it's also a strategic issue for our city, and it draws in, you know, some of the best and brightest from, from all around who want to live here and make this, make San Carlos their home. And the decision about where to put a school is, is a big part of, of helping the school district build great schools. I'm, I'm extremely sensitive to the concerns that have been brought up about traffic and about noise and about the loss of public space. I think it's a tough call and these are trade-offs, but having spent a lot of time studying this issue and discussing it with people, I think that this is better than the alternatives. So, from my perspective, a proposal's come from this school district for, for, for a land swap for Terlinda in exchange for, for Crestview. And as I said the other night, I support making Crestview available to the school district. However, I don't think that the proposal for a land swap constitutes what I would, what I would call a win-win for the school district and the city. And I, maybe I'll pause there, if, if, we can, we can talk more if you, you want to go through these, but if you're trying to get general direction on, is the council in favor of making Crestview available? I would say yes, you know, definitively I am. And then we can get into the question as to whether the proposal on the table from the school district is something that I feel like we should move forward with, and, and that's something that I have some concerns about.
Yeah, I think that is probably a good way to, a good way to parse it, so. And I would say that was fairly specific. So, who would like to go next? Matt?
Jump on it. So when this first came up, the allure for me was simply to find more park space that is usable in terms of field space and that kind of thing, knowing that we've got this field shortage in town. And so it looked like a, a real viable option to do some kind of trade and perhaps even with the city ending up on the upside financially after the trade, because the TL site, at least in my opinion, my estimation of it, having walked it before when we looked at putting in artificial turf, it's, I think, as Bonnie said, it's not that great of a field. You, you start getting up into that hill there and it's very rocky and the soil's not very good and so forth. I used to live up there, so I, I knew what it was like to try and grow a blade, even grow one blade of grass. It's not easy. But anyways, getting back to my point, I, I looked at it as a way to gain a, a field or two. Looking at it now and seeing the, the comments we've gotten, seeing what staff has shown us, I just don't see it happening because the access to the TL site would be difficult. And I don't see why we should take that on. If you were to develop the back end of TL, you probably would have to take out a house or two to get, to gain access. Likewise would be the situation for the school district, if they were to try and use that back part of their site for another school building for a charter, they'd probably have to talk to a homeowner about their home and taking it out so they could reduce the traffic congestion that Karen showed us with her photos that they've got already. But for me, I, I, I look at the whole thing, I look at the financial aspect, aspect of it, that's why I was asking about the SEQA. And if we're going to spend, I totaled it all up, and if you, this, this, discounting the wash that you would have, it's $464,500. Well, that would go a long way in our just developing the Crestview site for ball fields. So, I'm not, the, the shine is coming, coming off for me to look at a land swap. I've got other reasons, but I'll leave it at that for right now.
Bob?
You know, Mr. Councilmember Johnson has a certain way of, you know, we all have different ways of approaching projects and things. The difficulty I have is, the question that's there, if I say yes, then what am I, what am I agreeing to? Am I agreeing to negotiate? Am I agreeing to what we have on the table? And yet if I say no, then we have nothing. So, it's a very difficult thing for, for me to, to look at that because I don't know what the details are. Having been in the business of, of developing and buying property, I, I look at this and I go, okay, if I say yes, as I said, I don't necessarily, as Mr. Grocott said, I'm not really thrilled with the, the, the basic proposal that we've been given. So, I'm sort of putting, in a way in my mind, putting the cart before the horse, if, if I had a proposal that was here and we negotiated back and forth, and I go, okay, I'm willing to do that. Or if I go, this is all there is, I'm not willing to do it. So, I mean, I'll, I'll vote on this if, when it comes down to it, but it's going to be very difficult for me to say yes to that because I, I think in a different way. I, in other words, I want to know all the details of what I'm agreeing to if I say we're going to want to build that. And I don't see the details, and I'm, as, as Mr. Grocott said, I'm not overwhelmed by the, by the, just the basic thing that we've, we've been presented to before. No criticism of you--
No, no.
No, just a different way to look at it.
And if I may, very briefly, I, I, to me, I see the question is, are you, are you in favor of changing the status quo? Which is to say, you know, there are many folks who gave comment about wanting to keep the land as it is. And to me, the number one question is, the, what's causing us to want to change the status quo is that we received a proposal from the school district. Are you willing to move, move forward with wanting to entertain that?
The status quo, and me, somebody else offered us $18 million. Not saying that that's a firm proposal. That's why I kept questioning the city attorney because I'm looking at, I love options. If, if the city, if this, if the electorate says, hey, you can do whatever you want with it, that's great. I didn't want to necessarily say no park. I wanted to say, okay, here's the choices. And then we get to choose, park, sell, trade, swap, do whatever. Right now, we're, if, if I say yes to that, I'm eliminating a couple of the items and I'm, and it's difficult for me to do that right now.
Fair enough.
But listen to other folks talk.
Ron?
All right. One of the problems of talking to a lot of different people is that you start hearing things that you hadn't thought about. And that's what I've been hearing, I'm sure we've all heard that. But, you know, one of the questions that, that I've been asking myself and I've been asking other people is that if we, you know, is getting another piece of land that we have difficult access to, is, is that really such a good deal? But what it comes down to for me is, you know, what, what things outweigh other things? And when I think about the fact that we have more kids in, in classrooms, or we have more kids than we have classrooms to house them, we don't have enough playing fields, we don't have enough options to diffuse traffic. Home values are based on a lot of different factors and good schools are a key part of it. And so, the, there are no perfect solutions, at least no one's proposed one to me yet. I want, I want to make a decision that at least gives, that gives the people a clear choice. I, I think it'd be irresponsible of us not to be honest and clear about what's in this ballot measure, which obviously signals the fact that I'm in favor of having it. But I think we need to be very honest about it and upfront and not give people the impression that we may do something else than we really intend to do. So we need to say what we're going to do. I come down on the side, though, of the future of the city outweighing the, the need to preserve certain pieces of land. But having said that, I'm not sure, and I don't believe, that the, the, the actual idea of a straight swap really makes sense. I think everybody would agree that the city really, if, we're not really supposed to benefit from it, but we really shouldn't be left in any worse condition. It ought to be something that is fair and equitable at all. So I'm going to be looking to go for a ballot language that is, and maybe it's a companion measure, I'm going to be looking for something that's very clear and concise as to what we're going to do. And I want to make sure we give staff that direction.
It's interesting, actually, a number of the comments have sort of echoed, were sort of where we were to some extent at our special meeting in April. So rather than repeat myself from then, I'm going to try and take a little bit different tack on this. And, and actually kind of respond to a couple of, a couple of observations. You know, to start with, Bob, you, you've referenced the $18 million offer we got on Crestview, the Crestview property. I will tell you in all honesty, I, I actually, I've told Mr. Malpe this, I actually wish staff would stop talking about that for one very simple, practical reason. That offer is predicated on our ability to sell the property. As we've been talking about tonight, we cannot sell that property in its current state. We would have to first get permission essentially from the public to sell it. And to me, that, you know, I've never been a developer, but I think that would put a huge red flag on a developer whipping out a checkbook today saying, here, I'll write you a check for that property, not knowing whether they actually, whether we could actually sell it to them or not. I also, you know, following along in that, I have a funny feeling that, based on some of the comments that I've heard, not only tonight, but, but in conversations with folks outside of these meetings, if we aren't clear, as, as some of the other, my other colleagues have mentioned, if we aren't clear to the community about what we want to do with the property, and I would go so far as to say, if it doesn't involve addressing those issues of school overcrowding, traffic, traffic crowding and playing fields, if it doesn't involve those three things, I think most of the people in town are going to vote it down. So again, that property is not available for sale because it's not available for sale. People have a, in general, I think the community has a particular set of things that they're looking to see done with it if they're going to be doing anything at all, which I think is still a question. And, you know, the, the, Matt, I, I, I understand your concern about access to the TL, the TL property. I've spent a fair amount of time talking to staff and to Greg about that. There are some issues there. My sense is that none of them are issues that, that the district and the city, working together, couldn't find a way to make work. I mean, I've, I've told both, I've told many people, you know, to me, the idea of buying a couple of houses to punch a road in, that's about the last thing that I would think about doing. I, I would be, you know, somebody would have to go through a lot to convince me that that was what was necessary. I think there's another way to do it, and probably several other ways to do it. It's really more a matter of, in my opinion, deciding that this is the road we want to go down and moving forward enough to say, let's give the people a chance to vote on this, let's put something together that they can see what it is that, that, that they're voting on. Because this is a game-changing event. I, I know I've said this to you guys before, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity. And the reason for that is because school districts, particularly our school district, don't usually build new schools. There are many reasons for that, but they don't normally do that. That's what's compelling them to offer up something that I think could be used to address our, our field shortage. The comments that, that others on the dais have made about, well, gee, this is not an ideal field, I would agree with that. But it's a field and it's a better field than losing Heatherfield, which is what the alternative will be if we don't do something with the school district. So, you know, it's, it's, I forget who said it, but, you know, life is filled with, with choices, they're not always the choices that you want to have. You have to, you have to make choices amongst what's available to you. And I think in this particular case, it's a game-changing event, happens once in a very long period of time. It's an opportunity to demonstrate to, to the community that we really, there are two branches of government really can work together for the benefit of the community. And I just would, you know, I don't have, I don't have all the details worked out for people, I don't have some secret master plan that I could say, if you'd only-- could say, if you'd only sign on to this, this would, I guarantee this will work. But I just feel that this is something that we ought to really try and make happen. And it would just be, one of the speakers said this, in a different, different way, I just have a feeling that if, if we let this pass by, either ourselves, if we're lucky enough to live long enough, or our successors are going to look back and go, wow, I can't believe they let that one get away. And, you know, I just hope, I just hope there's enough, there's enough support here to move forward with this. Give the people a chance to decide.
Mr. Herr, can I make a comment?
Sure.
The, the difficulty, as I said earlier, and maybe I'm repeating myself, and I am, I apologize, is once, if, if we vote on this this evening as counsel in favor of the school district, the vote, basically, we've already told people what we're going to do. I mean, it's, it's a fait accompli. And, and that's, to me, taking off all other options on the, on the table. And I agree with you, no one's going to write a check for $18 million. I agree, believe me. I wouldn't. Actually, you're not going to do it until you know what's, what's there. But it takes away the park, it takes away the sale, it takes away other things we may decide to do with it by just going here. And so, when, if the item goes to the ballot, as, with, with the language, or maybe there's two items, maybe there's an advisory one, I'm not sure how it goes to the ballot, it's already decided. And I have never, why are we going to the, I mean, we're going to the people for a technicality then. I mean, we're just going for technicality, that they're going to vote for it, but we've already voted for this. I, I just, that's, I just can't, I can't get my arms around that one. I mean, maybe I'm seeing it differently, or maybe I don't understand it, but...
Provide a response there.
Pardon me?
I just... Oh, wait, I'm sorry, are you, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, that's okay. Yes.
So, I mean, my view of it is, the, you know, had the school district not had the question of, where do we build the charter school, then we wouldn't be having the conversation. So, the, the precipitating event was, the school district came to the city and said, we want to build a, a school up at, up at Crestview. And then the question is, you know, do you, the council, want to do it? And we say, well, we don't have the authority to do it, so we need to ask the people. You know, my view of it is, you need to tell, or I personally feel you need to tell folks what they're going to vote on, and that I would like to see, I, I personally would like to see actually a signed agreement between the city and the school district prior to the election, so that people know, which would be contingent upon the outcome of the election, that would say, you know, if, if the people vote to make Crestview available, then this is what happens. And then it's very clear. My concern with the other option is, is that people are voting essentially to change the status quo to give the council the authority, but they don't know what they're voting for. Some people will think they're voting for a field, they may not get a field. Other people may think they're voting for a school, they may not get a school. Other people may think they're voting for a park, they may not get a park. And, and so I think that, that that would be a really bad outcome for the city if we had a campaign and people didn't know what it was about.
Just one, one quick point.
Yeah.
Assuming the school district didn't come to us.
Right.
But Mr. Jones, who made an unsolicited offer of X dollars, I'm not going to even use the number, came to us, we could still be having this discussion.
You could, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that it's not just necessarily the school district coming to us.
Totally fair.
We'd be having the same, the same discussion about what we want to do.
And we may have that discussion, you know, next year. I don't know.
Well, not, well, if I vote, if we vote for that, I don't see how we can, but go ahead. But anyway, I'm sorry. I'm done. Sorry.
So, I think I was the person that punched this off at the last council meeting in terms of, let's get staff to look at this. The reason I did that is because I thought, well, it was some 40-odd years ago that this was designated as parkland, and it's fair enough to give it to the current citizens of San Carlos. Do they still want to see it kept as park? And that's the only question I wanted answered. I, I rather think of this situation with the school district as, you know, they may have brought it up, but that's it. That's as far as it goes. I'm not here to solve their problems. And I'm going to ruffle some feathers here, but let's face it, when we were dealing with artificial turf, they were not very willing to help us solve our problem when it came to artificial turf, and we wanted to put one at Heatherfield. And we also talked to the school district at that time about TL and other school sites. And the whole thing fell apart because of, the school board, in my opinion, at the time, didn't want to do business. So, that's number one.
Yeah.
Number two, I don't see going on the ballot and saying, we are definitely going to trade with the school district. That's not the deal. And it ruins our, our hand if we go on the ballot and say, we're definitely going to trade with the school district, because we have no idea, except that $18 million offer, what this piece of land is worth. And sure, we could go out and get an assessment done afterwards and try to do trade, but the best way to know what that piece of land is worth is put it out to the market, the free market, and let them decide. And, you know, if we put it out to the free market, and somebody wants to come along and buy it and use it for housing, and they want to pay us, maybe they want to pay us $22 million, well, that's good for us. Now, we're in a position where maybe we could go find a couple of homes next to a park and increase park space that way. It would give us options. But I don't want to close that down by going on the ballot and saying, yeah, we're going on the ballot to the citizens, do you want to change the designation? Because if you do, we are definitely going to the school district and swapping land. I don't want that. I don't want my hands tied.
So, I will give you a chance. I just want to respond to, to, to one thing, just because I was on the school board when, when that came up. And you and I have touched on this before and not, not actually, I think, closed the loop on it. Matt, I can tell you that the board, the board would have voted 3-2 to allow the, the city to put artificial turf at Heather School. And I know that because there were some very contentious discussions, and I was on the short end of the stick. Carrie Dubois and I were the two on the 3-2. In fact, I was actually disappointed when we didn't actually put it to a vote, because I had discovered, I thought I had discovered this great legislative maneuver to use, which I was very excited about. Only to have one of my friends from Sacramento say, oh, that's called a drill. We do that all the time. Oh, that's... But the reason it faltered was not, so they were willing to do business. The reason it faltered was purely and simply over control. And whether it was right or wrong, the district's perspective at the time, the board's perspective, was that the city wanted too much control over the fields. It would almost be as if the Heather School would have to ask the city permission during school hours for using the field in certain ways. Okay? Now, they may have been right or wrong in having that impression, but that's what it's founded on. There was a majority there that was going to, was going to do that deal, and it, it was solely a matter of control. Right? Ron?
One question I wanted to ask is, ask staff, is this a decision that we have to make tonight? Well, actually, two questions. That's the first.
That's a, there's a complicated answer to that, and I'll, I'll try to be quick. You know, we, I need direction before I can go back and talk to the school district. I need to know what the council wants me to talk with the school district about, if they want me to talk about anything with the school district. The issue of the election is more of a technical issue. And if you want to make the November ballot, you, you can push that decision one more meeting, in our estimation, and still meet all the required legal timeline milestones to get there. We may have to have some special meetings along the way, that kind of thing. But it's all doable. But we, we need to decide on the election by the end of May.
Okay.
In terms of the direction, what I'm looking for is, you know, the school district is patiently waiting. They've made an offer. How do I respond? Am I to respond by talking to them about swapping the land? Am I to respond in terms of talking about a lease, as was mentioned at the last council meeting? Am I to respond by talking about the appraised value and selling the property or putting it on the market? How, how do I proceed to promote whatever the council's agenda is here? Because it seems very unclear. There definitely seems to be some willingness on the council right now to do something with the school district that could lead to a school. You're not voting on a school tonight. What you're voting on is to give me, and, and you don't even have to vote, to give me direction on how to proceed. What I heard Councilmember Grocott say a minute ago is, his preference would be not to talk to the school district right now and, and craft a deal, but rather to proceed with the, possibly proceed with the election, put the very general question of, can we discontinue the North Crestview property as a park, and then put it on the market and, and evaluate your options at, at that time. That's very different from what Councilmember Johnson was promoting earlier, and I think different yet from what the mayor has talked about. So, there, there doesn't seem to be clear direction right now for how the staff can, can best spend our time and, and promote this issue on behalf of the council. And that's the direction we're looking for tonight. Even if that direction is, you know, what Councilmember Griselli, what, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to call you Bob now, aren't I? Sorry about that. What Bob was mentioning earlier in terms of, you know, leaving those options open and not wanting to be specific when you get to the election, that is a, you know, that is an approach. But, you know, it's, we're trying to come up with an approach that three people, at least on the council, are, are promoting is proving to be a little bit difficult.
All right.
Let me, if I may, let me, let me suggest something, just to toss it out there, to see whether or not we, we can, we can try and find a way to move forward. Jeff's basically asking for what kind of direction, if any, is the DIAS going to give him. I would propose that we charge Jeff with bringing back, a, a, meeting with the district, bringing back the rough outline, the terms, the basic concept of a deal which results in a school being built up on the property of Crestview, assuming that the ballot change gets put on the ballot by the, the council, you know, it's contingent on a bunch of things, and seeks to preserve, seeks to preserve the fairness of value for the city. In other words, address this issue of, which we all have different opinions on, but address this issue of, okay, if you do a swap, or if you do something else, how do you make sure the two things are equal? And if you don't do a swap, how do you make sure you get the appropriate value? So, that it would basically be, see if you can put a deal together preserving, that results in a school up there, preserving value for the city.
I, I think it's on...
That's my second question.
Oh.
All right.
Okay.
So, following on, on Mark's point, we do that. We give you the options that we want you to discuss with the school district. We'll know in two weeks whether or not they can live with that, correct?
Well, I, I don't know that we'll know in two weeks whether or not they can live with that. It's a complex issue. I think we know that there are really three possible approaches. Either they're going to buy the property, they're going to lease the property, or we're going to trade property. And there certainly could be hybrid models of those things, purchase options and lease cash deals and that kind of thing. But in general, one of those aspects is going to dominate whatever the option is, either swap. And I'm, I'm trying to get a sense, because I've heard from different council members, some are very much opposed to the idea of a swap for TL. And if that's not an issue, then I think the school district needs to know that so that we can focus on what option might work and, and craft a deal for the council to consider along those lines. I just think if we're too general, we're just going to keep spinning our wheels here.
Exactly. Well, I'm in favor of giving you specific instruction. But something, and I apologize, I probably should have asked you this sooner, but it just came to mind. Because I, the reason that I, not in favor of doing the swap is that I didn't feel that the city was going to get enough value. Does it help or hurt or harm the, the process by leaving it up to you to determine whether or not a swap plus something should be part of that negotiation? In other words, is there, do you believe that, that where, there would be value in the discussion of saying, well, if we're going to do a swap, we want this and X? Otherwise, I, I'm not inclined to leave it in, or I'm not personally inclined to recommend. I'd rather just leave it out and say, we're, we're going to sell it or lease it to you.
I think I would have to ask you the same question I'm asking you now, which is, are you, are you open to a swap? I mean, and a swap plus whatever. If that, if you're open to owning the land at, behind TerreLinda, then that's what I want to know. It doesn't mean you're going to. It means I'm going to go and I'm going to base my negotiations with the school district on that, that openness. If you're not open, I don't want to waste my time or the school district's time in trying to evaluate that if we should be focusing on a lease or a purchase or anything else.
I think, I think part of the confusion here, and, and now I think I understand part of the basis of why you phrase some of the subsequent questions the way you did, is there's confusion over when you're, some people are using the word, the term swap, it's property for property, that's it. You are actually using the term swap as a component of a deal. It could be a swap plus X million dollars. It could be a swap plus X dollars a year for the following number of years. So, the, 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 and, and I would say, in that sense, I wouldn't take any of those options off the table, because to me, that's why I was trying, that was, that's what I was trying to get at with this notion of, bring us back a deal that you believe to be fair. Okay? And whether that's got a swap or cash or lease or whatever, that's what I think the target is. Because that's what I'm hearing people say they want to do.
And if I may, that, that's actually not what I mean by swap. What I mean by swap is TL specifically. If we do a swap, that may not be the only thing to make it. I mean, we know that there's a difference in appraised value. So, let's say, you know, a fair value would be a swap of TL for the Crestview property plus, I think it's probably like $1.6 million, and you'd be looking at almost for appraised value to appraised value equity. But the, the question, and in the conversations that I'm having with the elected officials offline, has specifically to do with, does the city council ultimately want to end up owning a portion of the TL campus? I mean, we know what it looks like. There's a picture of it.
Okay.
If that's not a component, then I need to take it out for the discussion.
But you see, I think, I think part of the, I think part of the challenge is, if you think about the history of this and the discussions that have taken place, part of the reason the swap was proposed is because of the cash resources of the district. They are land-rich and cash-poor, relatively speaking. So, those things are linked. In other words, if, if, for example, if, if the, if the DIAS felt, yeah, we really want to make sure that, for all those reasons that people have been citing it, that, that there is a school built up there, the Charter Learning Center gets built up there, but we absolutely don't want to have any notion of a swap. Well, those two things are in conflict, I think, or could potentially be in conflict. That's why I think you can't parse it quite the way you're laying it out there. Yes?
I, I just like to, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to provide clarity on my position, which is, I would like to take TerreLinda out of the negotiations. And the reason is not because I want to see less parkland in the city. I just, I personally, having looked at this issue and talked to a lot of people, don't feel that the backside of TerreLinda is a suitable park for the city. And the reasons are, I think there's a major problem with accessibility. I've sort of joked that it would be as, you know, you're buying somebody's backyard and you have to transit through, you know, their living room every time you want to use it. There's, there's no direct access, and, you know, during school hours, it would be a very tough thing to do. It's not visible from the street. It's right on the edge of town. And, and as we've discussed, you know, I think building a park and a, and a great facility for the city there would require significant resources and require a shift in, in a lot of the priorities. We're doing a lot of great things. We have a lot of capital that's dedicated towards great projects, and we've given that direction. And, you know, as we've talked about, I think the Crestview site has considerable value. It has, it has monetary value. It has neighborhood value. It has open space value. And so, I, I think, that being said, putting a, a charter school at, at Crestview, as I said before, is something that I'm inclined to support. I just think that there are other options that this is, the land swap, the, basically the letter that we received from the school district was one solution to a specific issue. And I think there's probably other solutions. So, in, in the interest of giving clarity, I'm happy to support the notion of selling the property for somewhere near the appraised value to the district. And I'm happy to support, as we talked about previously, leasing, leasing the, the site to, to the school district. So, that's, that's my perspective.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So, the city manager, I think he's pretty clear on where I stand, but I just want to make sure, since we're trying to give some direction that way. Again, for me, this whole thing started with the school Again, for me, this whole thing started with the school district talking about a land swap. And I looked at it and said, if there's potential for us to end up with an athletic field or two, this could be a doable thing. I don't see that anymore. You've just mentioned, TL is not a, your picture of it is exactly right. It's like buying a piece of land, and you have to go through somebody else's land to get to it every day. That's not a good deal. So, you know, I look at it that way. I also look at the idea of putting a school up there. I'm surprised, not too many people have brought this up. I think Bonnie kind of touched on it a little bit, I think it was Bonnie or one of the other speakers, is this idea of a school that's an open enrollment school, basically. So you have people coming from all over the place to go there, and driving up, I don't know, you know, Bob lives up that way, and I used to, for a short while time, lived up that way, use half a gallon of gas just going up the hill. So, I know San Carlos is pretty green-minded, and, you know, the carbon footprint of having people who don't live up there, and it's not a neighborhood school, driving up the hill every day and driving back down, to me, and you guys know me, I'm not a huge environmentalist, but hey, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to call that one, let's call And I think there's something that we're all not seeing here as well, and that is, I don't think I'm at liberty to say what it is, but there is potentially a very big land deal that's going to go on in San Carlos in the not-too-distant future. And maybe that land deal will give the school district an opportunity to build a charter of school where they would like to. So, I think we're being a little myopic, focusing on Crestview as if it's the only solution. And then the last thing I want to say is, Mr. Olbert, you said that this might be, you know, if we let this one get by us. But there are people in the audience who spoke to the fact that if we let this one get by us and we develop it, we've also lost out on another opportunity, which is what Cecily Harris and some of the others are concerned about, which is, let's keep this space open, because once we put a building on it, even if it's a land lease, once it's built on, it's never going back to open space. And I think that's something that this community also gives a lot of concern to.
And if I may respond to some of those things, the community ought to have the right to make that choice. And that will only happen if we put it on the ballot. Right now, that's not what's going to happen, okay?
Can I ask one clarifying question for Matt?
No, not yet. I, I, go ahead.
Sorry, just briefly, and I wanted to direct this at both Matt and Bob and the comments you made earlier, which is, I just wanted to share a perspective of how what you're saying is hitting me, which is, you're saying, I want to ask the voters the authority to do something with this piece of land, but I don't want to say what I would do, how I would exercise that authority. And I personally feel like we need to, if we're going to ask the voters for the authority to do something with it, we need to tell the voters what we would do with that authority. And so that's, that's why, you know, I'm interested to hear what your perspective is on that. But I think it's important that we make clear, you know, what, what we would do if we were given the authority to, to change the status quo.
Mayor, if I could just, maybe in the, in the, in the interest of trying to move it along, and give Mr. Malpe his choices, couldn't we just take the three or four items that we have? Who wants to do a lease? Who wants to do a swap? Who wants to just sell it?
I was actually going to suggest that.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Another time.
So, I just, I did remember the other thing I wanted to respond to. You know, Matt, I know your, your comment about, I hope you didn't own a car that took half a gallon of gas to get up the hill. You know, one of the things I've seen that described a lot in comments that people have made, one of the things that I think people tend to forget is, the alternative is more traffic elsewhere. Cars stuck in traffic, cars idling in traffic. Everything I've ever read said that cars actually generate far more pollution sitting in traffic than they do actually moving. So, you know, even from a green point of view, I'm not at all sure that that's, that's really a substantive issue. Let's, let's do this. Despite the fact that I personally don't think that we can parse this this way, let's, let's approach this from the point of view of looking at the three elements of, Jeff, I think they were swap, cash, and lease, right? And swap will be, will be using your revised description of swap, which is, do you want to end up with the TL property? So let's go through that one by one and just get a, get a sense of where, where the DIAS sits. Who is interested in having a swap be an element of a potential deal? I am, obviously.
I'm interested in finding out. I don't mind having a swap, but what's the detail of the swap? And that's the issue that I've always had. I don't like the way it is proposed, so I'm willing to have Mr. Malpe go and get, you know, if he comes back with X, and maybe it's the same, but I'm interested in knowing what the difference is.
And that's all we're talking about at this point?
I understand. So I'm interested in understanding if they want to do it that way.
That makes two. Is there anybody else? All right, then the swap is not included anymore. Cash. Who is willing to look at selling this property for cash?
I'm willing to look at this property, selling it for cash.
Okay, that's three. Matt? Nope. Okay. So that's three, so that's on the list. Lease.
Not me. No lease.
Okay. So, your job has become very simple. You're just going to see if you can cut a deal with the district for cash.
Wait, we didn't, I didn't want cash, but did those who say that mean cash from the district, or cash from anybody?
Oh, okay. Fair enough. Let's, let's clarify that. I meant, I meant cash from the district. This is direction to Jeff to negotiate with the district. So, there were three people that indicated they, they wanted that, you still agree with that? Okay.
Before we make a final decision, can I, can I just ask a question?
Go for it.
Like to know what the objection is to exploring a lease? Since there are three--
Because my objection would be, once you have a building there, it's going to be there. I don't, I don't even want to think about, excuse me, your lease is up, we're going to have to close your school now. I won't be alive, but somebody will be.
But you said that you wanted to know more about a swap. What if a swap turned out to be something you agreed with, there'd be, end up being a building there? How's that different?
That's right, but it's, it's finality.
No, it's the, it's the lack of finality.
It's the lack of finality.
Better to boot somebody off.
What I had originally proposed at the last meeting was something like a 50-year lease. And keep in mind, you know, with the Transit Village, what's being proposed is a 99-year lease. So it would be a similar type deal.
No, I understand. I just, I, but I mean, it's one thing to throw people, I guess, not throw, but ask them to leave their homes. It was, it's been done in Hawaii with Hawaii, I mean, years ago. But it's another thing to say, by the way, your, your children aren't going to be able to go to the school anymore.
I guess the question to you would be, if the school district was interested in a lease and said, you know, in theory, we wanted to do a lease, would you say, no, I'm not interested in offering it to--
Yeah, I'm personally not.
Okay.
All right. So, I think we have directions for staff.
Now, if I can switch gears just a minute before we leave this item, and just kind of talk a little bit about some of the things I've heard the council struggle with tonight. I think one of the, one of the really difficult aspects of this item right now has to do specifically with this park abandonment process. That's very confusing, and it's very specific, and it's very prescribed in the law. And kind of doing this all at the same time makes it feel like either we're being too general, because we're just asking, hey, can we abandon this park and we'll figure out why we want to abandon it later on? Or it's forcing us to be very specific in terms of, hey, we've worked out what option we, the city council, like, what do you guys think about abandoning the park for it? And there's kind of a, you know, everybody's kind of, on the council has almost their own specific take on this issue at this point. Another approach, and it doesn't necessarily fit with the timeline of the school district who'd like to move this along quickly, but it doesn't add all that much time to the process, would be, would the council be interested in just pursuing an advisory measure at this point? In going to the public and asking the question, do you want it to be a park? Do you want it to be a school? Do you want it to be housing? And then, once you know where the community's coming from, figuring out the specifics. Because we're getting hung up on all the specifics right now, and then we have the complexity of, you know, this, this law in front of us.
Couple of comments. I think actually, given the time here and the fact that we, we still have a couple of other things on the agenda, that might be something that we could take up at the next meeting. I also honestly, I don't mean to disappoint people, I honestly think you're going to find out, we haven't, it doesn't really matter, because this thing is, this thing is not going anywhere, okay? And I hope to be proved wrong on that, but that's my honest belief. The, so, but, I mean, if, if other folks want to have that discussion tonight, that Jeff just outlined, that's fine. I mean, to me, I have, this, this whole thing to me, as I mentioned, is trying to, trying to deal with some very serious big problems simultaneously in the community. There aren't a lot of opportunities to do that if, I almost have no interest in messing around with the park just by itself. So, I'm not seeing a lot of interest--
Well, I don't, I don't know what an advisory, I kind of like the idea, but I don't know how far it gets us.
Well, I think, I was throwing it out there more as food for thought. I recognize it's getting late. I've got direction tonight to go back and talk to the school district. We have this item agendized again for our next council meeting, and I believe it's on May 27th, which is a Tuesday, because Memorial Day. So I will come back and I will report any outcome or result of the discussions based on council direction tonight. And perhaps we could talk more about maybe a slightly different path, if we're trying to understand what it is the community wants to do, and then redo it. It's kind of, we're kind of compressing everything into almost one decision right now, and it feels like almost maybe a little too much for the council to really digest and, and handle in terms of making those decisions. But right now, I've got direction, I will talk with Mr. Baker from the school district--
Can I ask one last question?
Actually, unless it's really important, I'd like to move on to the next item. So, your judge, is it--
No, I want to ask a question. We've given you the authority to do one thing. What if the district says, we have another idea, and you say, gosh, that's a great idea? Are you not allowed to tell us about it? What do you do?
I am allowed to tell you about, about everything, you know. If the school district wants to, you know, pay you in euros, I will come back and tell you--
Bitcoin.
Pay you in euros, or pork bellies, or, you know, whatever. I will, I will report out to you the results of our conversations.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, it may be largely moot, but there's 9A, which there were some people that had indicated they wanted to talk about it. The other option the council has in light of the discussion would be to continue 9A. You might want to give the public who came out to speak about it.
You're, you're sort of anticipating me, if you don't mind. The, the first thing there is, I was going to suggest to the DIAS that, that 9A is actually something, has not really much point about talking about tonight. So, you guys have any problem continuing it to the next meeting?
No, that sounds like--
We will do that, and then, as Greg was starting to say, I will leave it up to the individuals who deferred speaking to us under the 9B. If you'd like to address us now, you're, I will happily give you the time to do so. If you'd like to address us at the end of May, you can do it then, too.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think, for clarity for the public, if you or the city manager would just give a one-sentence, two-sentence synopsis of just what happened, and so people know what, what's going on.
I will, well--
I see a lot of nodding heads out there.
I would describe it this way, and Jeff, you can, you can amend it or enlarge it. The council has given staff direction to discuss whether or not a deal can be reached with the district involving selling them the property and Crestview Drive.
That was my understanding.
Plus, plus if there's any other fantastic idea that comes up that nobody's heard from before, you'll consider that, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, anyway, so for those individuals who did choose to defer their, their speaking, is there anybody who would like to speak? Yes, and your name is?
I had a lot of financial points which are now moot, thank you very much, to getting rid of the swap. But one of the things I heard today was that if there were, if there were, if there were playing fields at Terra Linda, that, that could be accommodated, but if the, if the Charter Learning Center was there, somehow that couldn't be accommodated in terms of the traffic. So, it sounds like there's four acres for the school district to consider. We've also heard about the Bartlett School, is it? The, the, a property in Belmont, which they are considering adding a charter school to, and they're looking for partners for that, so that's something else. Obviously, you're not the school district to consider that, but it's something interesting to have in mind. I can see why the council doesn't know how to answer question number one, because it says, is the city in favor of a learning center at North Crestview Site at any price? No, at a market price, perhaps. And so it looks like that's the direction we're going, that would be fine. There's a great many people who still think it should stay an open space, and it has been, and I invite anyone who's interested in that to go up to the top of this, this property and have a look. It's the highest point in San Carlos, 863 feet, and was graced this morning by a young buck, still with a fuzz on his horn, strolling across it, as they often do. It's a, it's a wildlife corridor. And so to summarize, I would, I would prefer, greatly prefer to keep that property. It's a, it's something that we were talking about a lot now, Measure A, talking about Measure Double A, I should say, maintaining open spaces for the next generation, and that's one that we have, it's local and it's open. And finally, if we, if we decide we want it, we need the money, it's a valuable asset, we want $20 million, sell it and then use that for various different uses around the community that, that will, will benefit lots of different constituencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Bob Black, longtime resident. As I said last time, and I, I still don't know what the, that property is named, I think it's commonly called Crestview Estates. And it was the Lands of Roth, a little more than 100 acres, previously subdivided. Now it has single-family homes, clusters of townhouses, and three open spaces, one of which is North Crestview Park. This property, under its current zoning, is fully developed. You can't put one more house on that property without rezoning it, and without changing the general plan to include a higher density, and that, so you would have to rezone it. Because of that, I think that we ought to clarify that whole process before we go further. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Yeah, and your name is?
Shane.
Shane.
I didn't, I didn't--
Oh, you know what? If you, please come up and address us, and if you can fill out a card afterwards, that'd be great.
And I was told I have a homework to do. If you're going to address your question, I'm not a good public speaker, so I will make it brief. You know, I'm, I'm a mother, I'm a mother of two children at Arundel School, I'm a mother of a soccer player who needs field space. I think you know as well as I that school issues and field issues are a big need for the city. And I, I work in a, I'm, I'm a wealth advisor, a financial advisor, I work in finance. And I, it, it's hard for me to hear everything brought down to an economic issue when sometimes it's not just an economic issue. And this is, the importance of our schools and our kids are paramount to, I think, our community, and, and that's not, at least what I've heard in the last couple meetings, not talked about. It's how much can we get for this, this parcel of land, and, you know, how much does, maybe tax money does that bring in? And I don't think that's the only issue. Our kids need field space, our kids need schools, our kids need to be educated, and that benefits our entire community. And, and I just feel like it's been talked about, that it's like we're building a jail in this facility, and it's, I, I'm, I was just sort of shocked by the, the outpouring of opposition to having a school in a community where it seems to be a benefit for everyone else that lives around a school in this, in this city. where it seems to be a benefit for everyone else that lives around a school in this city. So, I don't have any numbers or finance to put behind this, but I'm just, you know, talking as a parent and as a community member that I think there's a couple of approaches to take from this, and the financial is one, and the needs for a community that is clearly built on supporting people with young families is another. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, your name is?
Irene Chen. Thank you for letting me address you. My name is Irene Chen, and I've been a resident of San Carlos for 10 years. I appreciate it's late, so I'll keep my comments brief. I'm a little bit puzzled by the fact that... of this process because I think that regardless of your stance and your opinion, we all agree that this is a very controversial issue. It's a complex issue that's worthy of seriously considering what the options are and for allowing staff and district to come up with like the best possible and creative solutions that's fair to the city as well as taking traffic needs, field needs, and kind of the long-term needs into consideration. So, I'm curious, why is this question not rather will... Rather than, "Is the council in favor of the school district?" And putting that pressure for you to decide now, is not the question simply, "Will the council allow the people of San Carlos to vote whether or not they would like to see a school there?" That way, the council members could take the input of all of the citizens of San Carlos, and it would give you additional months to have kind of like serious consideration between like the district. And why would you not ask them to consider to explore all options that would simply arrive at the outcome you want, a fair outcome for the city? And why not let them have the time to explore whether it is a swap or a lease, you know, or sale? I don't see why you have to constrain them right now.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. I addressed you last time. I can tell you, Councilmember Grokot, that if you own a Prius and you drive to the top of the hill, you do lose a great deal of mileage going up and down the hills every day. I can answer that for you. I just want to mention that as an over-40-year resident of San Carlos, I like to think we're better than other neighboring cities, but I'd like to have you consider that in the news just today and last week, City of Burlingame found itself in the situation of having a school partially built on a very narrow street. There hadn't been an EIR done, and now the local residents there have half a school built because, in fact, the process was stopped by objections. I think before anything gets started and then stopped, we need to get all the information and all the processes in place. Sorry, nervous here. Anyway, I want... I would like you to be smarter than Burlingame. Thank you.
I'll be sure to pass it on to my friend, Michael Brownrigg. I love to have things to tease him about. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Yes. If you haven't filled out a card, we'd ask you to do so afterwards.
I haven't, but I can do that. My name is Vastna Albradovic. I'm an engineer here in San Carlos. I live in San Carlos on Club Drive, and I work in San Carlos, and I have a lot of respect for the City of San Carlos. I work with the City of San Carlos very closely. City of San Carlos has also a planning department. I would really like to know what their opinion is of this proposal of putting the school on top of the hill. Considering that I live on Club Drive, I will just tell you this. In the last 17 years, there were three cars that jumped the curb coming down so fast Club Drive. Those same cars come down Beverly, that street that's even more narrow than Club Drive. So, we have a problem with traffic and speed. So, I would be very concerned if my child was coming down that street every day, up and down. That's one issue. The other issue is, besides the environmental impact and the speed and the gas, you're also going to be burning a lot of brakes, and I know that because I do this drive every day. To me, right now, what I've heard today and last time, this whole thing looks like a really bad project, not well thought through and very rushed. We need to take a deep breath and go through the steps. I mean, everybody has been confused today and last time. I also resent that all people that are against the school on top of this hill are seen as anti-children and anti-school. That is absolutely not true. I would love to see a school in San Carlos somewhere where people really can get to without causing all the traffic that we have had. So, I think we need to look at other issues and other possibilities and other places. This is not the only place, and there is a lot of... A huge movement to keep this as a park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we will move on from that item. Should we give the room a minute to clear, or... You're welcome to stay. Heck, you know what? We're going to take a five-minute break. Bob, can we get you to come back up here, please?
Was there anything I can ask?
What's your question?
Was there a traffic study on the county road regarding adding and...
Hey, Matt.
Yeah, it's just better when I go.
I just... I did both.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're getting stuff...
Who's Tyler Colvin?
I know who he is. He's an outfielder. He used to play with the Cubs, and picked him up this year as a free agent.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll go talk to the city attorney.
Oh, okay. Where are we? Oh.
Flexing out a little bit.
They're getting loaded. I don't know if you have a specific order of presentations. Staff is leading off.
Staff is leading off. Does Sam Trans have a presentation?
They have.
Okay. No, they can go second, and we'll let... Yeah. Does he mind if we get started? So, we can start now? Okay. Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting here, folks. Thank you. We're moving on to... Thank you, Crystal.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, it is. I'm just not...
Close the doors.
Outside doors.
Yeah.
Good.
So, we're going to take up item 9C, consideration of adopting a resolution to maintain existing Caltrain shuttle pickup and drop-off location along Old County Road following review, discussion, and reconsideration of the issues surrounding the relocation of existing Caltrain shuttles. Jay, something tells me you're going to make a presentation.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. I'll have a short presentation to make, and if the council has questions, Al Sve, Community Development Director, is here as well, and say between the two of us and the city manager, we'll try to address those questions, and then I know there's some other presentations that are going to be made for you. So, I'll just move right ahead. Giving a little bit of background, as part of the Transit Village project hearings, there were several neighborhood concerns raised about shuttle behavior, erratic shuttle driver behavior, and general safety concerns that were raised. The East Side Connect project, which is currently under construction, was always going to require a temporary relocation of the shuttles, and so when the construction reached that certain point, the shuttles were moved over to the west side of the train station. So, they're no longer servicing the east side with all the construction work. In and around that November timeframe, 2013, council made a decision... In and around that November timeframe, 2013, council made a decision that would require the shuttle move to stay on the west side permanently after the project was completed. So there was a shuttle analysis done, and the information came back to say that there were longer transit times for the shuttle pickup and drop-off by having the shuttles required to be on the west side of the station. Also, as we've heard, there's been some employer pushback from employees who take the shuttles saying that it may be now more inconvenient for them to take the shuttles at risk of missing their train connections. So that's been some of the information that we've heard. And we have had Samtrans request to have the shuttles returned to the east side once the project is complete. That was something that we heard, you know, back in the December timeframe too, as well as when staff was having discussions, was the East Side Connect project going to be temporary or was it going to be a permanent relocation. So the diagram on the screen in front of you, just maybe for the folks at home to be oriented, Old County Road runs north-south through here, and what this depicts is the project in its after condition. So the current train station area is here. This is below the platforms, and this line denotes the curb line for the old shuttle cutout, which has now been demolished. And so if you go by there right now, you'll see that there's lots of construction activity. And when the project is complete, we'll have, there will be, in this location, a curb line that comes out and then crosses over this area. We're going to have additional street trees planted in here and enhanced sidewalk, and then at this location, the intersection with East San Carlos Avenue, there's a traffic signal that is moved slightly north from its current location at the crosswalk to the spot in San Carlos Avenue, so that that can be an actuated signal for bicycle and pedestrians to use East San Carlos Avenue from the train station area. So the project also includes a shuttle stop area, which is a cutout, and so it essentially is part of the plan. We have that part of the project currently on hold for council's consideration and the decision and direction for us moving forward, but we will be able to accommodate shuttles on the east side in the after condition, and this distance is a little more than 100 feet as far as the measurements are going, and in this area, this is, say roughly, in the area of 85 to 90 feet based on the long transition curbs here. So there's a little bit less room where the current area was compared to the area that we have as part of the new plan. So shuttles would be able to come over, stop in this area, drop off, pick up passengers, and then come down to the signal, East San Carlos Avenue, and turn left. So that's the way the project will go forward. So as far as the staff's recommendation from the information in front of you, we're recommending that you allow the existing shuttle drop-off and pickup area to be maintained on Old County Road on the east side of the station because there is room for it, it has been part of the plan, and it is, we feel like there's good traffic accommodation for that. However, you can, in your discussion, after you hear all of the input, you could allow that just the Samtrans shuttles would be allowed on the east side, and the private shuttles, whom Samtrans doesn't have any control over or enforcement ability to tell them where they can be and how they should behave, you can have them be on the west side. We can provide the signing that's needed for parking enforcement to be able to specifically designate those Caltrain shuttles to be only allowed on the east side if necessary. Or the council could leave the situation as it is, and that is, the shuttles would stay and be permanently relocated to the west side, and in the event that the Transit Village projects move forward, the parking areas would be prepared for those shuttles to be able to drop off and pick up passengers on that side. We are waiting with the construction contract right now, and if the council decides to change the plan... Oops. And eliminate this proposed shuttle stop and have the curb and gutter and sidewalk continue straight across here, that's roughly in the neighborhood of about $50,000 extra. And we had identified that, I think it was a couple months ago, as a potential cost of being able to do that work. So with that, I'll go ahead and leave it for council questions at this point. I know you have others that want to talk about this, and time is getting late, so...
So what I'd like to do is ask questions of each presenter as they're up, so are there questions for Jay?
I have one. Thank you, Jenny. You mentioned one of our options was allow only Samtrans shuttles on the east side. When you say Samtrans shuttles, do you also mean ones operated by Caltrain? Do you just lump them into one group?
That's, yes, I misspoke, but yeah, they are labeled...
We can say Samtrans slash Caltrain.
They're labeled Caltrain shuttles, so yes.
All right. And how many approximately is that?
As I understand it, there's four, but Samtrans knows for sure that.
Okay. So, and that's, they make four trips in the morning, four trips in the afternoon? Maybe I could ask Mark Simon that.
Mark would be able to answer that.
I'll ask him that, because I have a list of questions for him. Okay, thanks.
Questions from anybody else? I had a couple. So Jay, I just want to double-check. You're saying that after, the current plan for the East Side Connect project is after the modifications are done, there's going to be less room for shuttles?
No, actually slightly more room for shuttles.
Okay, good, because I was going to be very concerned if it was the other way around. Your options, where you talk about allow only Samtrans shuttles on the east side and have private shuttles stay on the west side, I want to make sure I understand something. Do we have the, and this may be a Greg Rubin's question, do we have the ability to discriminate amongst drivers that way or amongst shuttles that way?
Well, we do have, based on the, in the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, that set of standards that we use citywide, we do have the ability, based on parking signage, that can have a parking sign for shuttles only. It's essentially a bus symbol that then has a space for a logo, which could be the Caltrain logo on the sign with that bus, so that only those particularly labeled shuttles could park in that particular area. And so that becomes an enforcement issue, obviously. Any of this would be, you know, determined finally by enforcement, but we do have the ability to mark the spaces in the cutout area for those shuttles only.
I'm glad to hear that. I thought from the earlier discussion we had a couple months ago that we didn't have, there was some question about whether we had the ability to actually do that.
Yeah, I might consulted with the Public Works Director about this, and then the more I thought about it, we really already have that kind of restrictive situation in town already with our bus stops. We already have, you can't park at a bus stop, and they're really are restricted to use by the Samtrans buses. So this would be an extension of that basic concept.
Good point. And then last question, Jay. Additional construction cost under the leave situation as is of approximately $50,000. What's driving that again?
Essentially, this area right now, the existing sidewalk area, that's an existing curb line that we're going to be up against with that shuttle cutout. If we don't have the cutout, then we have to lay in a new curb line all the way across here and then put in all new sidewalk area in this location as well.
And that's $50,000?
Yes. That's based on, that's the, when we asked, we got, we have some small design cost, but then all the change order costs from the contractor came up to that amount.
I hope the sidewalk I'm having installed in front of my new house doesn't cost that much per square foot. That number seems high, but be that as it may. Okay, thank you. Nobody else had any other questions, right?
Mr. Mayor, could I make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Okay, we're continuing. Jeff, I presume that Mark Simon is coming up next. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for giving this matter reconsideration. We appreciate it. My name is Mark Simon. I am here representing the San Mateo County Transit District. The district through Caltrain is the partner, funder, and operator of record for the four public shuttles. We understand there's always some confusion whether it's Samtrans or Caltrain, but for the purposes of reality, not just this discussion, these are Caltrain shuttles. The district also through Samtrans is the property owner seeking to develop the land at the train station. Let me begin with an apology. It appears that we have left the impression over time that we would be willing to support permanent move of these shuttles to the west side. It was unintentional. We certainly have more information than we had before whenever those discussions took place, but in any event, that was incorrect, and we should not have left that impression, and I apologize for that. Since discussion began, considerable new information has become available, so we're here tonight to express with clarity that moving the shuttles permanently is something the Transit District would find troubling from an operational point of view and concern that it would undermine the ability of the Transit Village and the associated Transit Center to operate in an acceptable manner. Our goal from the outset has been to model transit-oriented development. The majority of the attention has been focused understandably on the development part of that equation. The transit is our business, and the shuttles are an important component of the Transit Center we hope to create at this location, providing San Carlos with an opportunity to set an example for supportive transit and encouragement of people to use it. When completed, this will not be a train station or a bus station. It will be a multimodal transit hub. As such, it is our obligation to ensure as the Transit District that it functions at the highest level possible as a Transit Center, supporting the growing desire of people across the board to get out of their automobiles and reduce their carbon footprints. Permanently moving the shuttles creates serious and negative impacts on what is a relatively modest shuttle program that serves the San Carlos Station. If our goal is to increase the number of people who commute by transit rather than alone in their cars, and that is, our goal as a Transit District, moving the shuttles would undercut that goal. There are four shuttles that operate per weekday. The cost, about 27% of it, is underwritten by the employers. The four are, the route names are Bridge Park, which is associated with Manor Association, Clipper, which is also Manor Association, Electronic Arts, and Oracle. There are 33 daily connections to the train station. There is an additional 10 on the west side from the Flex San Carlos Shuttle. The contractor that operates those four shuttles has five primary drivers and six backup drivers for the four shuttles. Hours of operation are roughly 6:45 in the morning to 11:00 a.m. and 3:10 to 7:15 in the afternoon. The average weekday ridership is around 525 weekday boardings. That translates to around 300 individuals who are using it. I don't know where the other 225 go at the end of the day, but they don't seem to get back on the bus. The number of shuttles Samtrans operates on the east side, it's important to note, is zero. The Samtrans shuttle, the only one is the Flex Shuttle. The other ones are Caltrain shuttles. There are other private shuttles serving the station. Currently, they serve it from the west side, and they don't in fact go into the train station. They tend to use El Camino. With the completion last summer of the Hexagon Study, commissioned by the city, we expressed what we thought was concern that moving the shuttles would create significant operational problems. The Hexagon Study indicates that commute times would increase by about seven minutes in the afternoon. It sounds like a small amount, but it is often the difference between somebody making their train connection and missing it, and if they miss it, they have a wait of another half hour or so. Our customers have already indicated that that kind of change is something that makes the shuttle unworkable for them and Caltrain an unacceptable alternative to driving. With the help of the employers, we surveyed as many of our shuttle customers as we could, got about 150 responses, about half of the number of people who ride. 46% said they would not use the shuttle if it meant they could not make their preferred connection. 38% they would not use, said they would not use the shuttle if they had to leave work early to catch their preferred train. Since we moved the shuttles to the west side in February, some employer shuttle providers have already reduced the number of trips simply because the connections can't be made. We have already seen a decrease in the total number of riders on the shuttles since the shuttles were moved, we assume largely because of the connection problems. This is at a time when ridership in every other aspect of our business is growing, in some places, growing explosively. Furthermore, a decrease in the shuttle ridership would significantly impact the grant funding for the shuttles. As part of the grant reporting process, we report cost effectiveness, which is calculated based on the number of riders, average trip length and emissions. Decreases in ridership clearly negatively impact those numbers. Moving the shuttles to the west side also have an impact on the Transit Center. Once it is constructed, we'll lose at least five parking spaces to accommodate the shuttles in the Transit Center parking lot. Additional spaces are also needed to be added for taxis, leaving still fewer spaces at the station. When moving the shuttles to the west side has significant and negative impacts on the service, we think the impact of operating on Old County Road can be minimized by ensuring that the shuttles are able to use the designated shuttle area. The way to do that, we think, is to make it clear to the taxis that they can't park there anymore. Caltrain staff surveyed the shuttle cutout area in March and found that taxis were consistent users of the cutout, parking there sometimes for several hours at a time. This has a lot to do with confirming what we've heard from other people, which is that the shuttles are often double parking on the street because they can't get into the turnout. The easiest and most immediate solution, it seems to us, is to relocate the taxis to the west side of the station and enforce the restriction that only Caltrain shuttles can access the cutouts. We will provide, as we already are, taxi parking spaces in our parking lot, and we are happy, truly happy, to work with the community to make sure that the manner in which the shuttles conduct themselves in that neighborhood is appropriate, is in keeping with the standards that we all share, and that if they're not, we have an opportunity to respond quickly and forcefully to that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Bob?
Mr. Simon, you indicated there are four Caltrain shuttles, correct?
Yes.
But then you also threw in this Flex Shuttle. Is that yours too?
That's a Samtrans shuttle. That's part of the additional service.
But you said there were 10 of those.
What did I say?
You said 10, and I want to understand. I understood there were four shuttles, and now there's 14?
No. Let me find my notes.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay. Four shuttle routes. I'm sorry, connections. There are 33 daily connections from the four shuttles and 10 connections.
Let me just lay it...
There's one shuttle, one Flex Shuttle.
Four Caltrain shuttles.
Right.
Four buses.
Right.
What else?
On the east side?
Yes, that you want. What else besides those four buses?
Nothing else. That's all we want.
So this Flex thing you mentioned, go to the west side?
I just didn't want to be accused of not fully disclosing all the shuttles that are serving the Caltrain station.
I understand, but so only four buses?
Right.
The Flex ones are on the west side?
Right, and they'll stay there.
Okay, okay. I just want to understand what, because this is important. I mean, so, and they go from 6:40 to 11:00 or so?
Yeah.
And then they go from 3:10 to...
7:15.
What's the, I mean, I apologize if you don't know this, but, okay, at 6:40, how many of those four are there?
I have here Michael Stevenson, who is in charge of our shuttle program, and he can provide that...
Okay, sorry, thanks.
It's okay.
If you could come up, Mr. Stevenson, that'd be great. Sorry, but I just, I want to identify how many buses are at one point in time or sitting there.
Ask it anyway.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, I'm Mike Stevenson. I'm the Shuttle Programs Coordinator, excuse me, the Associate Operations Contract Administrator. I'll have a hard time using my old job title from two years ago. To answer your question, it varies depending through the course of the service window, how many shuttles are there at any one time. To your specific question, in terms of at 6:40, I believe there are two.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at is...
Based on the trip time, they overlook...
What I'm getting at is there's never going to be more shuttles than there is space.
There shouldn't be.
There shouldn't be. Well, that's going to be, it's not a matter of shouldn't be, there won't be if we pass this, okay? So I don't know how you carry it, because then you're going to double park.
No, I agree.
Right? And that's the problem. That's part of the problem. So I don't care how you do it, but you can only have two, I guess two can fit. Mr. Walter, how many two? Three can fit? Fine, three can fit. So you can't have more than three?
We can commit to that.
I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I can't...
I understand what you're worried about, that we're just going to continue to double park.
Yeah.
Clearly, that's something we can commit to trying to not doing.
Okay. I mean, what I'm saying is, if the rest of the council, and I'm just this one person, but certainly the rest of the council can go along, and I don't know whether they will or won't, but I mean, that's the whole point of, okay, the whole situation, is when you have them there, and I appreciate it's difficult to do, don't get me wrong, but they just somehow, you've got to coordinate it so that, that's the whole issue if this is allowed. So that's my sort of statement question. Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any other questions?
I do. Yeah, but it's not for Mark. It's when we get, if we have some cleanup questions, I have something for staff.
Oh, go ahead and ask it now.
Oh, okay. So this is for city staff. So this is for city staff. My impression is that this, Old County Road is still a preferred north-south route per the BPAC and countywide bicycle plan?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to know.
Ron?
I have some questions for Mr. Simon. Thank you for answering my questions earlier, but I, for the benefit of the public, I'd like to ask some of them, because you've already answered some of them, so that's good. You said that there are four SamTrans shuttles, correct?
Caltrain, yes.
SamTrans slash Caltrain?
Yes.
And how many trips do each of them make in the morning? How many times do they come in and out of the station?
Good thing Mike came.
And when do they start? When do they stop? And I assume they don't come at noon or one?
Six forty to 11 o'clock.
Six forty to 11 o'clock.
And 3:10 to 7 o'clock.
All right, so how many trips is it?
Trip information, do we count trips? Six, right now, we're running sixteen in the morning, seventeen in the afternoon. Previously, in January, there were eighteen in the morning and twenty in the afternoon.
So sixteen in the morning, seventeen in the afternoon.
All right, and that, like Bob said, that sixteen goes from 6:40 all the way to 11 o'clock?
Right.
All right, so when is the heaviest commute time? The most traffic impacted time? Is it between seven and eight, seven and eight-thirty, seven-thirty and nine?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine. So how many in that timeframe?
How many trips?
Yeah. How many times are they pulling into the station?
We would, I'd need to research. I have that, I just need a few minutes to pull them up.
We'll get that for you in a second.
All right, all right. So let me just ask, oh, Bob asked about how many total, and your answer to me, you, I said how many rogue shuttles. I guess I should have been more polite and said how many private shuttles, correct? And you said Apple, Google, and inflections?
Yes.
So that's really a total of seven shuttles throughout the day that come to the station?
Yes.
And were coming, I presume, all on the east side before we changed it?
The three were, yes.
All right, so you had, there was the option or the possibility that seven shuttles could be pulling in there at the same time. Is that, did that happen?
Well, sure, it did happen from time to time. It also contributed to some of the backup and some of the double parking.
All right, all right. Okay, I asked you about what happens, tell me about what happens if your drivers don't comply with the routes. How do you know? And when you know, what do you do about it?
We do spot check. We have somebody who goes out and checks from time to time. And on top of that, we rely on the residents and the public to let us know. We did in a spot check, for example, in January, see someone who did not follow the acceptable, the compliant route in the morning. He later said it was because it was construction and he was trying to avoid the construction and still make his schedule. But between the morning and the afternoon shift, we were able to speak with that individual, retrain them, I think is the term we used? And make it clear to him that he's supposed to follow the compliant route, which he did in the afternoon.
But these were your drivers, right?
Well, they are the drivers of the Caltrain shuttles. I don't want to parse this too much, but they work for our contractor. They don't work for SamTrans, so.
Correct.
But it's the ones for whom we are responsible.
Right. So the ones that you're not responsible for, Apple, Google, inflections, that if there's a problem with them, if they are noncompliant, if they are violating the routes, you don't have much recourse?
We don't. The fact is that they tend to, they tend to use the west side more than they do the east side. They're essentially using the Caltrain station as sort of a kiss and ride lot. And so it actually works better for them to be on El Camino the whole time they're doing their work than it is to be on Old County Road. So I think it's not as significant an impact as the four shuttles that we're talking about that are the Caltrain shuttles. But you're correct in that we don't have any jurisdiction over them. We'd have to figure out a way cooperating with the city to see if we can't find some.
Another question, I apologize, I didn't ask you this, but I did think of it. Are the shuttles impacted by just private automobiles pulling up and dropping people off?
Into the cutout?
Waiting for their, you know, the people that they're waiting for, just, you know, wife waiting for husband, husband waiting for wife?
Well, the fact is, most of the people who do that tend to use the parking lot on the west side, because it's, there's plenty of space there, it's more convenient. All I can tell you is that we were out observing over several days and all we saw pulling into the cutout, other than shuttles, were taxis.
And can you give me a rough guess as how many taxis typically would pull up there?
Well, it's hard to judge, because some of them pull up there, park and go to sleep. So it's hard to know for sure. It looks like it's anywhere from five to 10 of the usual cab drivers who think that this is a good spot for them to pick up fares.
So until we dug up the street and made it pretty much inaccessible, there was really no restrictions on who could pull up there?
Well, yeah, there's, there's a sign there that says it's for shuttles, but I guess the best way to put it is there's been no enforcement of any restrictions.
Right, right, okay. I may come back, but go ahead.
Cameron, did you have any? Okay, Mark, I had just two. Let me do the simple one first. I just wanted to confirm something I heard you say. So the private shuttles are currently only operating on the west side?
All the shuttles are, because there's no access.
Okay, yes.
But yeah, our observations have been that they prefer to operate on the west side.
West side, okay. And then you mentioned early on, when you first started doing your presentation, that you apologized for perhaps giving the council and the planning commission the wrong impression about the shuttle situation. You said that there are, there's new information that came up. So I was listening to what you then walked us through. What in that was new?
The survey of the customers and our ridership numbers since we've moved the shuttles to the west side.
Okay.
And an opportunity to more thoroughly study the Hexagon Study that was done last summer and better understand the impact of it. And we didn't do as good a job as we should have of making clear, close on the heels of that study, what we thought the impact would be.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have actually a presentation that Dimitri is going to be giving us on behalf of GEFC. However, we are coming up, I think you did through 11:45, correct?
10:45.
10:45, excuse me. I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we extend the meeting till 11:00.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, right here.
Okay.
Just for the room.
That's fine. Four to one.
Might be three to two next time.
Excuse me just a second, but the question was how many trips between seven and nine, and the answer is 20.
20.
20, thank you.
12?
Oh, 12.
12.
I'm getting old.
Is that current or is that previous? What I heard previously was 18 to 20.
You want to steal my water?
Trips in the morning currently or trips in the morning when you're running?
Welcome.
Current, okay, so the current schedule is, actually has fewer shuttles than, if they're moved back.
Actually, if folks could please address the council?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Guys, guys, thank you.
All right, so thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to present to council. I appreciate that very much. So I just have to re-figure out how this puppy works and start this little slideshow. Little screen mode. Here we go. So as you all know, that moving the Caltrain shuttles was an important part of the package that ultimately got the Transit Village approved and averted a referendum. But it's important to understand is the history and, you know, how we got to where we are today. So the city made plans on the berm with little community input. Mike Garvey, the former city manager, came to the community in a meeting and profusely apologized about that lack of outreach. That lack of outreach created a set of conditions that we've been living with ever since. Since then, in what would appear to be apparent conflict of interest, he became a consultant for SamTrans Caltrain afterwards. The repercussions that we have been facing for well over 15 years are, shuttles appeared out of nowhere. There was no discussion, there was no community input. As far as I understand, the city wasn't aware that shuttles were being placed there. After that, shortly after that, taxi drivers appeared with their associated issues. Not only that, but the power line poles got stuck right in the middle of the sidewalks, making them non-ADA compliant. Dozens of trees were removed, landscaping didn't appear where it was promised, parking was removed on the west side of Old County Road. Our neighborhood has been paying for that lack of outreach ever since. So East Side Connect, I was on the advisory committee and I thought, hey, great, a chance to get in on the ground floor on some issues. And, you know, I brought up shuttles as a problem and that we needed to address that as part of East Side Connect. Unfortunately, my input was no longer solicited when I started bringing up shuttles that we needed to figure out some way to fix them. And I think Ben stole my line earlier tonight. It was deja vu all over again. Moving the shuttles, as Mr. Simon alluded to, that they gave the impression to planning commission and staff about moving the shuttles. This is, this should be taken in as if we build it, they will come. That's a little bit of a pun there. Well, you know, gosh, I think it's a little more than an impression. We went through 11 mediation meetings where I became great friends with our, with our folks at SamTrans. And in that matrix, an agreement was reached that any rules set by the city will be followed by all shuttle operators, either publicly funded or private. Parties also agreed that SCTV will provide a west side shuttle access where none exists today. This was part of that mediation matrix. You all have it, you see it. That's not an impression. Well, let's go a little further. We did public records document requests, as you all know, because it's very hard to take the veracity of a, of a certain public agency. And on July 2nd, we have already increased the maintenance schedule and will move the shuttles and taxis after the planning commission directs us to. That's not an impression. That's a statement from Brian Fitzpatrick. As we discussed, for the shuttles, we will do whatever the city tells us to do. It's a note from Brian to Mr. Simon. Mr. Simon has a slightly different approach when it comes to neighborhood outreach. We're most assuredly not prepared to tell those East San Carlos guys that we're prepared to move the shuttles. Yet, he was prepared to move the shuttles as well. What happened? My goodness gracious. Well, before we talk about what happened to the shuttles, let's talk about what happens to the GEFC neighborhood if you guys decide to bring them back. East Side Connect, remember, is narrowing the roads on Old County and on East San Carlos. And what I want to remind you guys about this is that the shuttle study was predicated on shuttles going up and down East San Carlos Avenue. That's an important point. That is the seven-minute delta that they're claiming. If they're going up and down Holly Street, the Hexagon was talking about a three-minute delta maximum. So here are the current conditions, as of yesterday, of East Side Connect, and you can see the width of the lanes. Looks like it's going to be pretty hard to accommodate those shuttles. You saw the previous, and I just emailed you guys my previous slide deck with all the traffic issues regarding the shuttles. That's looking south, this is looking north. The shuttle stop is going to be somewhere over here and you can see how little room there is. One thing I'd like to note from Mr. Walter's presentation is the cutout for the shuttles is significantly shallower. It may be longer, and Mr. Grisilli, you were asking if it was larger. I believe Mr. Walters was stating in the affirmative that it's larger, but I believe he meant longer. It's actually far shallower. There's much less room. You can see here, there's a lot less room to accommodate the shuttles. Let's keep going. Here's East San Carlos Avenue. You'll notice that there's a bump out, for some reason, that was created to accommodate a couple of businesses. And this was also over the weekend, or perhaps Friday. You can see a truck backing in, just doing a regular delivery, completely blocking the traffic. There were a couple of cars behind them. And gosh, that's going to be kind of hard for a shuttle to get by there. Here's UPS truck that my exposure was all off, it was on iPhone, but you can clearly see there really isn't room for two-way traffic. Meanwhile, so those are the conditions. That's what East Side Connect is going to do. Meanwhile, on the El Camino side, let's take a look. Let's take a look at, you know, the foot dragging that went on to try to get these shuttles moved to the west side, which somehow Apple and Google, kind of smart companies who know what they're doing, find the west side location to be more advantageous to them. Interesting. Take a look. Wow. Here's a parking lot that was not designed, this is not a $3.6 million multimodal station that has unbelievable amounts of engineering thought behind it and $3.6 million of federal funding. This is just the old station that's so horrible. My goodness gracious, there's room for about 10 shuttles there, beautifully stenciled in white, white paint. And you can take a look here, there's not only is there room for shuttles, there's room for a lane of traffic and room for parking. It's markedly different. Here, slightly north of what we're reviewing on the El Camino side is a pull-in for shuttles and buses, easily accommodatable and could work very well if somehow $3.6 million doesn't pay for a space for four shuttles. So what we talked about are the unsurmountable issues relating to potentially a three-minute increase. And what I, what I'm showing you here are the shuttle routes. And we're talking about a worst case between three to seven minutes. Seven minutes includes East San Carlos Avenue. Be hard to see how shuttles could actually go there. And I clearly articulated the issues with the shuttle study. So take a look here. You think this little jog here is the big issue. How many traffic stops are there? How many, how many people are being pulled in and out of these stations, yet somehow moving from the west side, from the east side to the west side is an unsurmountable engineering issue? It astounds me. And if you actually think about it, given the throttling on Old County Road, it's quite conceivable that after the project is built, the shuttle routes are going to be faster going from the west side. Entirely conceivable. The other thing that I find very odd is one of these shuttle routes actually goes along 101 during rush hour. I'm kind of astounded that one right turn lane, one right turn on red somehow is a far bigger engineering issue to solve than driving down 101 during the rush hour. Couple of other points, and I'm just about ready to wrap up here. Brian Fitzpatrick sent a note to city staff, Jerry Walters in Alsa Bay, back in June, and they found 26 spots, extra spots, when they, when they started looking at the multimodal design. Mr. Simon indicated in an email to the city that accommodating those four extra shuttles would be an unsurmountable engineering task, given that it would eat up 25 spots, yet, interestingly enough, they found 26 extra spots and a note saying, we think we can create more with the designer. So worst-case scenario is if they add the shuttles, they'll gain a spot. So what's sad about this is Caltrain policy talks about context-sensitive solutions. It's in here. Transportation investments seem to be tied to land use decisions to result in context-sensitive solutions. That means community input. The community gave the input. The willingness was there. This is, shows bad faith on the part of the Samtrans crew, that they were never intending to move the shuttles. So, let's step back for a minute. You know, for the Transit Village, I have to admit, the process worked. Council listened to the community, to the developer, to Samtrans. You guys did a great job. You made the proper trade-offs. And because of those trade-offs, you didn't get a referendum, which we were fully prepared to do. Some kudos to Mayor Grisilli. He likes to talk about splitting the baby. At this point, the baby's been split. You split it anymore, you're going to injure the poor thing. So, you guys, you guys figured it out. You figured out a way to make this happen. The developer wants to build this project. It's actually within the context of our community, and a big part of that was moving the shuttles. I'm not going to show you all those pictures that I had. I emailed them to you. I also emailed as, as supportive evidence, further emails from Samtrans staff. Of particular interest are the emails from Samtrans Engineering Staff, who all along were telling the PR representatives who, who attend these meetings, that trees were not going to fit on the berm, and the EIR proves that. So we are now losing two out of the three major mitigations for this Transit Village project, if you guys decide to split this poor baby yet, yet again. So that's it for me, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Dimitri. Any questions for Dimitri? All right. Thank you. I have some comments that I wanted to make before we entertain, well, no, actually, I take that back. Are there any other questions for any of the presenters? They have questions? Yes, Bob?
Mr. Walter, could I ask you a question, please? So, we can, apparently, the length, it can't accommodate three shuttles?
Yes.
Will the width, in other words, let's say there's just one, I don't care if there's three, will the width of that shuttle block any lane?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
The shuttles are a cutout variety, and so they can snug up to the curb pretty well. So we believe there's enough room for them.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. That's the only question I have.
Ron?
Dimitri mentioned that Old County Road is being narrowed. I'm, I'm sorry, I wanted you to stay up for a minute. He said it's being narrowed by, how, how much is it being narrowed?
I don't have-
Is it all the way, is it, excuse me, north to south, the entire length?
Not the entire length, no. Primarily the area from about terminal, then through on past Holly to the end of the residential, almost to Taylor, where we have the bulbouts and the sidewalk enhancements that are being placed. That's the primary area that's being narrowed.
So it encompasses the entire length of the station?
Oh, yes, the entire length of the station, yeah.
And what about these cutouts being shallower? Or how much shallower? Or are they shallower?
I think Bob just asked that question.
But I, I'm sorry, I didn't-
He said, he said-
I said, can a, can a shuttle stay there without blocking a, a lane?
Okay, you just asked it a different way.
Yeah.
Yes. I, I still think it's a different question. Stay there without blocking a lane, but the question is, is the cutout shallower when it's done than it used to be?
The, the physical room, yeah, it'll be slightly shallower than the current one. And, and in part, that's because the entire roadway width is being narrowed through there. So the, the current shuttle cutout was very generous in terms of its width.
And the total length of the new cutout will be how much longer, shorter than the previous cutout?
It's, the, the new one's a little over a hundred feet, and the other one was in the range of ninety feet of usable space.
So a tiny bit longer.
Say ten to fifteen feet.
Ten to fifteen feet longer. All right.
Any other questions? Matt?
Just if, if we're, the, the staff report and the supporting material just gives us a resolution to maintain the existing shuttle pickup on, along Old County. If we chose to do an alternative and move it to the west side, staff would have to bring us something back. Is that correct?
Well, as far as the work that's needed on the east side-
No, no, I'm just talking about paperwork, like, a resol, here we have a resolution to keep it on the Old County side.
I can answer this.
So, yeah.
The council has already given direction to move all the shuttles to the west side.
Okay.
So by not taking action, you would be reaffirming your previous decision. If you're going to change your mind, you have a resolution to do that.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
I think Matt's, I think Matt's concern is still valid in the sense that if we tweak the resolution, we, we either have to decide we're comfortable tweaking it on the fly, or we have to have it brought back.
Correct.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we will proceed to take public comment after I entertain a motion for extending the meeting. And I would suggest you pick 11:15.
That's what I was going to pick, 11:15. I move that we extend the meeting to 11:15.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
That's three-two. Same thing as before, we'll, I'll call out a couple of names. Nancy Zeebergs, followed by Sam Hersberg. Three or four? I have about four minutes worth of comments.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Nancy Zeebergs, forty-plus-year resident of San Carlos. With the changes on Old County Road, I first have a question of, was there a traffic flow study done in connection with all of the work that's being done? And if so, I'm not aware, and there probably was, but I'm, I'm wondering where I can find where it was published, as to the narrowing of and the placement of the divider that's being put in there, so that it's, it's reducing that left-hand turn lane northbound onto Old County Road. It just, by, by cutting that down by half the distance of what there used to be on the left-hand turn, is just really boxing up the flow there. So I would like to know where I can find that. But, the flow, the flow of information seems to be lacking to our council. And I think that's been unfair on the decisions that you've made, and that we have been allowed to give input to the council on your making decisions. The Hexagon study was dated July 31st. The email that was part of tonight's proceedings was dated September 30th. But yet, the city council adopted as a condition of the project's approval on November 25th that the shuttles would be moved as part of it. So while asking for our input, and letting the community believe that our input mattered, it didn't seem to matter, because it was after the fact that they had said, no, it's not going to work, it's not going to work. If the decision is reversed, and we lose that part of the battle, and we're losing trees, and so forth, it's just, I just wonder, have we all been led down that garden path? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Jeff, can, can staff get back to Nancy on her question about, was a traffic study done on Old County? And about the, I think she wanted to look at the plans for the narrowing of the road?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So Sam Hersberg, followed by Paul Maginetti.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Just seventeen-year resident, I'm the longest elected serving representative, previously from the L'Oreola Park Association, as well as the Greater East San Carlos Association, as the name changed. So I've been involved in representing the community for many years, over ten years now. And in terms of historical context, Dimitri's right, there was a lack of public outreach when the berm was done that eliminated parking on the west side of Old County Road. It introduced the shuttles and taxis, and relocated power lines in our sidewalks, which caused folks, folks in wheelchairs, as well as people pushing strollers to have to walk into the street to get around these power lines. We really think, appreciate the, the city council and city staff for East Side Connect project. There are some concerns about the project, which I'll discuss in just a second, but the problems with taxis and shuttles has been well documented, over six years of discussion. I think I attended about a hundred different meetings, general plan, zoning, planning commission, city council, draft EIR, final EIR, development determinations, PDA discussions about the Transit Village. And the cut-through traffic through our neighborhood, the idling, the trash, the double parking, the taxis, the noise, it's been well documented. And we think the city council made the right decision in November after receiving input from what was then many meetings of folks in red shirts from the community speaking to you about these concerns. So we really appreciate you taking that position. If the residents have to live with the parking problems potentially from the Transit Village, and we've already had to live with all the impacts from the berm, a few minutes delay for shuttles on the west side seems minimal, because we're all going to have to learn how to live together. There's a concern about some shuttles being allowed back on Old County Road, and then, is that going to increase in the future? I just wanted to provide, just, just to say again, the enforcement burden appears to be on the residents, and that's, that's unfortunate. It shouldn't be on us to bear the burden of, of this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Paul Maginetti, followed by Ben Fuller.
Thank you, city council, for staying up with us. I'd like to echo Sam's words, thank you for undergrounding the utilities. That's, that's great. I can't begin to tell you how much that's going to make a difference to the feel of our neighborhood. I want to point out that that money is paid for with, I believe, monies from our utility bills. And that money, it's special monopoly money, it can only be used for that one purpose, and that is the sort of projects like undergrounding utilities. The multimodal station is funded by a Livable Cities Grant from the FHWA, federal money that was funneled through the F, through the MTC to a grant to Samtrans, which then transferred it to the FTC. That does not allow use of that money for private enterprises. And that is why that multimodal station was piecemealed out. That is why Legacy was not able to build that. Yet, for this three, six, $3.6 million of, of our money that we all paid for, it can't handle four more shuttles. Now, I've heard disturbing rumors of threats of political and financial retribution if we don't allow these, these shuttles to take away the, the station. And to me, these issues deserve full disclosure in the light of day. If they can't be trusted on their word about shuttles, how can they be trusted with a $1.5 billion infrastructure? To close, this is not a NIMBY issue. This is a NMPA issue, not in my front yard. I just spent all this money fixing up my front lawn. I don't want you copying a squat on my brand-new lawn when I just paid for a restroom right over there for you to use. So, don't make me read all these documents that I've requested. Don't make me read all this petty vile vindictiveness. I don't want to do that. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ben Fuller, followed by Dimitri Vandellis.
A deal is a deal is a deal. So, you guys all looked me in the face, with the exception of Cameron, when the Transit Village was approved, and then Cameron piled on and voted to move the shuttles himself. And here we are today, talking about going back on a deal. And meanwhile, we all know the shuttles don't fit. I thought Ron had a great question, which is, how wide is that area? And no one is able to explain the differential, the, the delta between the width of the past one and the current one, but we all know, it looks like it's about six or seven feet less wide. And we all know that shuttles are going to be clogging Old County Road. Why? Because it's too narrow. We are extremely appreciative, funny money or not, because I know there was a lot of real money that went in after Rule 28 money to actually do this deal. It wasn't just undergrounding, you guys paid for a lot of stuff, and we're very appreciative of that. But I think you guys have a tough decision here. And what's really problematic is, we went through eleven mediation meetings. Al and Jeff told me, hey, these mediations are meaningful, give it all you got. We did. Mark Simon looked us in the eye and said, hey, listen, if the city tells us to do it, we'll do it. And, and meanwhile, they did studies before the Transit Village was approved. It was baked in the deal. Let's not change our minds now, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
A couple of points as a, as a private citizen. Mr. Walter, Mr. Walters noted that in this new potential shuttle drop-off, there'd be a shiny sign, you know, perhaps with a Caltrain logo on it, and that would magically keep taxis and other shuttle operators from using it. I, I urge you to consider the fact that we've had fourteen years' experience with a similar sign that says, only shuttles are allowed, with dismal results. So there is, there should be no expectation on the part of any council member that magically only, only these four shuttles are going to work. As, as I showed in the pictures, it's, it's abundantly clear that there really isn't, isn't the space, where there's tons of space on El Camino and for a new multimodal station. So those are the, the key points I wanted to make. Also, the, remember, the shuttle study that talks about the seven-minute delta talks about East San Carlos Avenue. And when we start having traffic problems, all those shuttle operators are going to just start cutting through our streets again, and we're going to go back to ground zero, we're going to have people standing in the streets, getting these shuttles to stop. So if you guys want to go through it again, we will. But this is going to change my approach to working with council, working with the city, and working with staff in the future, if you guys renege on a five-nothing vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. Does anybody else wish to address the council on this item? That's the last card that I have. All right. I think we should look to extend the meeting. I think we might be able to get this done by 11:20, but feel free to suggest a different time if you'd like.
Well, let's, yeah.
Oh, that's right, we do.
I'm going to move that we extend the meeting to 11:30.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll go with you this time. But I want out of here at 11:30.
You can abstain.
You want out here at 11:30.
All right.
We should have less comments and more decision in this item, so.
All right. So we will entertain motions. Anybody would like to make one, before we have discussion?
Make a motion to make sure I do this right, because I have to get this in. Is it the, to approve a resolution that's in the staff report? Do I have to read it? Which I can't do, because I broke my glasses. So.
How about?
Maybe I have to read.
I'll read it for you.
Fine.
Resolution 2014 dash-
Forty-four.
Forty-four. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos to maintain existing Caltrain shuttle pickup and drop-off location along Old County Road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, my glasses broke. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Here is a second. All right, we can have discussion. Unless somebody's going to make a competing motion.
That's what I like to do, make a competing motion.
You may go.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we allow only Samtrans shuttles on the east side. Everything else, including taxis, stays on the west side.
Is there a second for Ron's motion?
I'll second that as well.
Can you actually second two different motions? Okay.
I think you can.
All right, I learned something new. Try not to go schizoide here on me, okay? All right, so we have, that, Ron's motion is, the latest one will be the one that we address first, but first discussion.
If I may?
Yes.
To me, this is pretty easy. Somebody said it was hard. I think Ben said it, this is, you know, complex, difficult decision. It's not, to me, it's very easy. In the, it's about the 1850s when this land was-
Please, we've got to get out of here.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to give a history, but-
Okay, thank you.
The point is, in the 1850s, this land, where the railway is, was deeded to the railway for a railway. And one could argue for public transportation in the big picture, moving forward to current day. There's plenty of land there to provide for public transportation, give it trains, buses, shuttles, people parking and getting on the train, whatever. shuttles, people parking and getting on the train, whatever. In my opinion, SAM Trans and Caltrain and combined the JPB, they need to do their operations on their property. And they can do that. It's been proven during this construction process that they can do that. Number two, the reason I ask the question about the route is because, as Mr. Simon said, their numbers are up, I heard the other day. Numbers are up on people who use bicycles to commute to work. So, we can expect to see, if statistics hold true, greater numbers of people using their bicycles in San Carlos on the preferred route, north-south route, which is Old County Road. Now, you introduce, I counted up between Mr. Grisilli's questioning and I think the questioning down here by Ron, four shuttles that are private, or, excuse me, three that are private and four that are SAM Trans, seven shuttles plus taxis, because you're not going to be able to keep taxis out of there in a condition where things have already been narrowed, the road's been given a diet, as they call it, and I just rue the day that a shuttle driver who can't see very well because of the way those things are set up takes out a bicyclist. It's not safe. We're trying to cram too much stuff on a limited right-of-way, and so I think those shuttles don't belong over there, they belong on the west side. So, to me, it's pretty easy. You leave it as we decided, and I guess my last point is, I think Ben's right. A deal is a deal.
Thank you, Matt. Other comments?
I'd like to make a comment. So, it's my intention to support moving the SAM Trans shuttles back to the east side. And, you know, the hour is late, and I think it's important just to be honest and frank. The reason is, is because I think we, I loved Dimitri's earlier slide where he said the system worked, and I think, you know, I have a great admiration for you guys, and I think, you know, the city is better off that you're here, and this was a case in which you engaged, you put tons of energy into a process, and you got a compromise that you could live with. And there's a million small things that can always attack those compromises and make them fall apart, and I think that we jointly, the city, you guys, should seize upon that victory and get that across the finish line. That being said, Dimitri gives a hell of a presentation, and I think that a lot of the concerns that he brought up are real. I think that, most notably, it's the questions about blocking traffic, it's a question about excessive speeding down residential streets, and then there's a serious legitimate issue about inconsistency and promises that were made and that were broken. What I would like to see, and I wanted to ask Ron as a friendly amendment, is that currently the shuttles are on the west side because of East Side Connect. I would like to see, before we move them back to the east side, to have staff facilitate a meeting where we invite a member of the board, of the east side board, and a member of SAM Trans, to see if we can work through some of these safety issues, some of these traffic blocking issues, and really hopefully reset the relationship and have a dialogue about it. And I'd like staff to come back and report on how that went, and I would like everybody to make a good faith effort to try to come up with ways in which the main concerns about blocking traffic and about safety can be addressed. I think these are solvable problems, and I would like to see the neighborhood and SAM Trans engaged to try and find a solution. And if we can do that, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I would.
And if we can do that, I think we can move forward, and I want to see us, I want the history of this project to be written, that a proposal was put forth, the neighborhood engaged, and the result was something that, you know, was a dramatic reduction in scope, and it was a demonstration that when people get engaged, they can find things that have a big positive impact on their community. That's what I have to say.
All right, well...
Bob, or Ron?
Through the chair. So, just to understand the amendment, so are you saying that it's predicated on this meeting before the item is approved, or...
Well, so, we can move the shuttle, we could have another resolution in six weeks to move the shuttles back to the other side. What I'm saying is, I'd like to have the meeting before the shuttles are moved. I'd like the staff to schedule the meeting before the shuttles move.
So, you're not going to, then this, we're not approving his first two items then?
No, I'm not making a contingent. I'm saying that in addition to asking folks to move the shuttles to the other side, that we also have staff facilitate a meeting.
Okay. The motion is to move the shuttle to the other side and...
Correct.
Okay. Just want to understand.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ron?
All right, since I brought this up, I want to make a couple of points. I don't think anybody would disagree that this has all been handled very poorly. Mr. Simon, I realize that you've made a good faith effort. I appreciate your apologies, but I just have to tell you that SAM Trans behavior hasn't been what we wanted throughout this whole process. If, though, this option had come to me, or come before me, six months ago, I probably would have thought it was a reasonable option. I still think it's a reasonable compromise, but I'd want a lot of conditions on it, things like, we need signs, no private shuttles or taxis on the Old County roadside, we need to put signs there, we need to have our sheriff's department enforce it on a regular basis, not periodically. I would like to see a high presence there. But my motivation is that the goal was, and still is, always has been, at least in my mind, is to create more housing. Now, I realize some people don't believe the threats, that if this doesn't happen, the project doesn't happen. I think we pushed the envelope about as far as we can push it in November, and if it doesn't, if this, if we are absolutist in this, and we say, as Mr. Fuller says, "A deal is a deal is a deal," and we say, "Absolutely, we're not going to be flexible, and we're going to be rigid in it," and the deal goes down, then it's left to another council, and it's five to 10 more years before anything's done with that property. Some people would probably love that. I wouldn't, but to me, more housing is more housing. Hopefully, we get some of it affordable. There's really been no winners here. I think if there is a situation where somebody wins and somebody loses, that's the prescription for all kinds of bad things. But I think that it's something that we can, that can be done, can be managed, and that's why I made the motion.
Bob? Do you have anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add.
I have a handful of comments to make, but I have a couple of minutes' worth of comments that somebody else is going to make for me. Crystal, can you run the video for me? Or, okay, let me go down and do it. Where is the keyboard? Okay, I think I saw it up here before. Is it set up someplace?
Just on the IE icon.
Okay, there we go. I spent a good portion of this weekend combing through our video archives of the planning commission and the council meeting. I discovered a bunch of things. One is that I need to do a much better job of combing my hair, but on a more practical level, what I want to share with you is here, and I think I left enough context in so you can get the point.
And then, a question about the shuttles and taxis. I understand...
Can we increase the volume?
At least the least. In my assessment of mediation issues, that SAM Trans is willing to agree to move the shuttles to the west side, is that, am I overstating it?
No, you're not overstating it at all. So, to see what to say today, no shuttle zone, we couldn't serve that side.
I see.
So, but what we have told, what we have agreed to with city staff is the law of unintended consequences. We all understand right now what happens if the shuttles are on this side and there's some concerns. What we want to do, what we suggested to the city, and I think the city agrees, is that we're paying to study, we're paying for a study, we're going to split across from the city to look at the consequences of doing that. By adding five to seven minutes of travel time for the shuttles and by pulling them through off community out, what are the impacts on the traffic on off community out? What are the impacts on shuttle ridership? What are those impacts? Because we feel that the city, in order to make a decision if they want to move the shuttles, should know the facts.
When this project is done, you're going to have a full-blown transit plan. One of the things I like to point out is double-report kissing of the area. People go over there drinking after eleven miles and add hot drop-off. You drop out in the gray zone, you stop in one of these parking spots, you drop out for people.
I see.
Here, we have a full-blown kissing of the cars, shuttles, buses, whatever can use that area to drop off.
This is what we're going to listen to, or I'm going to walk out of here. This is absurd. Does it work or doesn't it work? Did anybody look at this?
Effectively, it means that we need to bring shuttles over there, and then we need to figure out a way that buses can continue to serve this area. So, that means we need to bring three more spaces in here. When you bring three more spaces in, you effectively take this from the directly parallel, perpendicular, if you will, parking, you shift it to an angle parking situation. What that means is you lose about 21 spots. Now, we're not totally tight on that, and I sent an email out yesterday to our designer, and I said, you know, "We need the most spots we can possibly get in this northern area while getting three more shuttle spots in there." But the preliminary, and I think pretty close to final, is going to be, we're going to lose about 21 spots in that northern area. So, that's going to be one of the impacts you're going to run into. We add about a seven-minute time penalty to come down Holly, come up El Camino, and in Cherry. One of the impacts of that is that now, instead of one bus being able to, you know, meet up with a certain number of trains, it may take two. Adding a simple seven minutes to it may mean that now one bus can't do, meet up with all those trains. You might need two buses to meet up with all those trains. So, you've got a potential impact of cost there. The other issue that could come into play is that these shuttles are funded by a combination of employer funds, grant funds from different agencies, you know, typically air control, you know, air management.
Through the chair. How long is this going to go?
And by the Seminole County Transportation Authority. One of the other potential factors is, now by having two buses do what one bus might be able to do, when the San Carlos route is compared against other routes and the efficiency is looked at, the score for San Carlos will drop because it's less efficient, meaning you'll be less competitive for funds. As noted in the report, there's four shuttles that are either funded or run by SAM Trans or JPB.
Right.
There's also at least one other, and probably two or three other private shuttles. So, while we're committed to working with you and working on rooting and effective ways of doing this, there are other shuttles out there that will follow the rules of the road.
Right.
And they're not required to do anything but follow the rules of the road. We would probably go above and beyond that. If you said you don't want us doing it, we wouldn't do it. These other shuttles are going to follow the rules of the road. Okay. As Martha Condon Doyle once observed in a very famous Sherlock Holmes story, is the interesting thing is that the dog didn't bark in the night. All of the things that we were told just a few minutes ago were known and understood months ago. You heard repeated references to, "We will work with you, we are committed to make this happen, this can work." Nobody at any time, or at least Mr. Fitzpatrick, nobody at any time teed up the issue of, "This project is unsustainable, undoable, cannot be moved forward if the shuttles get moved." In fact, there's not even an implication anywhere in there that that was the case. We all know what's going on here. The veiled threats that were given to at least some of us, I know I received them in private from various members of the oversight board for SAM Trans, Caltrain, the JPB, whatever the heck it is, about cutting off the funding for San Carlos, about making things difficult for us. This is purely and simply something that has been brought up, it's an issue that's been manufactured at the last minute for reasons that I'm not sure what they are. And in the sense, it doesn't matter what they are. The question is, how do you deal with organizations that bring up issues like this? To me, I wouldn't, you know, I'm not a big stick-to-stay-the-course kind of person, but in this instance, you stay the course because you're trying to make it clear that you don't want to be nibbled to death by little changes time and time and time again, and you also expect a certain level of expertise on the part of the organizations that you're negotiating with. That's all I was going to say.
Call the question, please. Well, we'll see, is there, let's do a roll call to see who wants to call the question.
Through the chair, if I can ask the council to just extend for two minutes, I'd like to talk about one modification that I think ought to be made to...
Can we extend it to 11:35?
I think it ought to be clear in whatever resolution the council is, I'm sorry, let me, why don't you finish it up?
Move that we extend the meeting to 11:35?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. We have a question to call the question. Would you, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Mayor Ober.
Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to hear what Mr. Malpe wants to adjust.
I was going to suggest that whatever resolution you consider be amended to make it specific and clear that the expectation of the San Carlos City Council is that moving the shuttles back to the east side be contingent on the project as the council had approved and/or as it's currently being recommended by legacy partners be brought forward, and that no additional changes in height, density be considered, and that those things be linked. Obviously, council's discretion whether or not they want to do that.
I wouldn't have any objection to that.
Cameron?
Nor would I.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, then, Crystal, would you call the roll?
I'm sorry, we're just revoting on my motion.
That's the currently acted motion, as amended federally by Cameron and as further amended by Mr. Malpe.
Fine.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
No. All right. Item 9D, consideration of a resolution adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the American Local 856 Freight Checkers, Clerical Employees, and Helpers Union International Brotherhood of Teamsters (IBT) Unit.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Menon Hall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight for consideration is an MOU, or memorandum of understanding, tenatively agreed to by the Teamsters Unit. This group is comprised of 15 budgeted positions, including the mechanic, maintenance workers, and senior maintenance workers. The resolution before you includes a 3% salary increase effective November 4, 2013, and a 3% salary increase effective November 3, 2014. The fiscal impact of approving this contract for both years is approximately $95,000, and there is enough money in the budget at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Rebecca? Seeing none, or hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Through the chair, should there be someone, anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item?
You know, I assume there was not, but is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this item? There were no cards submitted.
Is there any more left?
Well, there's a few. As I said a minute ago, or second ago, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2014-...
Forty-five.
Forty-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the American Local 856 Freight Checkers, Clerical Employees, and Helpers Union International Brotherhood of Teamsters (IBT) Unit.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing the call for none, we will call the roll. Crystal?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober. Mayor Obert?
Yes. And I believe with our agenda change, we finally come to the end of the meeting.